Okay, once again, welcome to the September 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Murvisboro Planning Commission. Whoever's present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. Tonight, we have five public hearings scheduled for tonight, the first of which is a rezoning application for Valley Brook on approximately 58.7 acres located along Compton Road to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Green Trails and Kevin Estes is the applicant.
Mr. Blomley.
Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our first of five public hearings, as you mentioned, is the Valley Brook PRD rezoning. This is the third time that it's been before the Planning Commission. The first time was in January, the second time was in May, and it's back for the third time with another revised plan. Just some background on the location. Property is located along the south side of Compton Road. It's 58.7 acres. Back in January, when this initially came to the Planning Commission for public hearing, we held a public hearing on the annexation. At that time, the annexation was recommended for approval minus a 10-foot strip along the southern lot line. The applicants or the property owners, the current property owners, have requested that the annexation not proceed to the City Council until such time as the zoning quote-unquote catches up with it. If it does catch up with it, I don't believe that the property owners have any intentions of the annexation moving forward if the zoning does not move forward. With that being said, the request is for PRD Planned Residential District, which is the same zoning classification that has been requested since the very beginning in late 2014. The surrounding zoning classifications, just to the west of the subject property is zoned PRD Planned Residential District. It's the Generals Run Town Home Development located along Compton Road. Also to the west of the subject property is the Reserve Single Family Residential Subdivision, which is zoned RS-12 Residential Single Family with minimum lot sizes of 12,000 square feet. To the southwest of the subject property is, I believe, the Ridgeport Subdivision, which is also zoned RS-12. South of the subject property is, there are two parcels that are located in the unincorporated county, one of which we have received an annexation and zoning request, which will be brought up to the Planning Commission for under new business later on this month. To the east of the subject property are several large single-family residential tracts along the south side of Compton Road, as well as several single-family residential subdivisions located in the unincorporated county. And the same can be said for along the north side of Compton Road, some large single-family residential tracts and some single-family residential subdivisions in the unincorporated county. When the Planning Commission held its first public hearing on this matter on January the 7th, there were concerns regarding such issues as traffic, drainage, and density. After the public hearing, the matter of zoning was deferred. The applicant came back with a revised plan in May. At that time, the zoning request was deferred once again with the motion being made to defer with the fact that there would be another public hearing should the plan come back to the Planning Commission and also another neighborhood meeting. You recall back in November of last year, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting at Ermasy Eagle Elementary School, and the applicant held a second neighborhood meeting also at Ermasy Eagle Elementary School on August the 10th. I'd say probably about 15 to 20 people showed up at the meeting, and the sign-in sheet has been included in the Planning Commission agenda packages so that you can see who attended and where they live. The applicant has submitted a revised program book that reduces the density overall from 250 to 181. The plan that the Planning Commission reviewed back in January was at 276, I believe. There is a modification, there have been a number of modifications to the most recent plan. One of the components or one of the residential elements of the plan that the Planning Commission reviewed back in May was a product type called the Villas. They were similar to what we know, what we see as single-family attached or zero lot line homes. Those have been removed from the plan. The other elements that remain in the plan, the large lots, the small lots, both single-family detached, and the cottages, all remain. The numbers have been tweaked somewhat as far as the number of units in each of those components of the plan. For example, the number of cottage units, which the applicant has indicated is age-targeted but not age-restricted, has been reduced down to 64. By way of comparison, the Generals Run condominium development directly to the west is approved for 69 dwelling units. The applicant has increased the 11,000 square foot lots to 12,000 square foot lots, and the 6,000 square foot lots that were proposed along the eastern boundary of the tract have been increased in size to a minimum of 8,000 square foot lots. Mr. Matt Taylor will be going over in a moment the plan in more detail with the changes that he and his client have proposed. The overall density, as I mentioned, has been reduced. In the original plan, it was 4.26 units per acre, and it is at 3.08 dwelling units per acre. Of course, a portion of the property is not usable because it is encumbered by Bear Branch Creek and the floodway of Bear Branch Creek. But taking into account the entire acreage of the site, the density is 3.08 units per acre. As I mentioned, Mr. Taylor has a presentation regarding the latest plan, after which we will need to hold a public hearing, and then the Planning Commission will need to formulate a recommendation to City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have, as will Mr. Taylor and Mr. Whitaker as well.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley at this time?
Mr. Taylor, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you again. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC here in town. I'm accompanied tonight by the applicant, Mr. Kevin Estes, as well as a representative from Goodall Homes, which is the proposed builder of the cottages that we have proposed on this plan. We are here tonight to re-present the Valley Brook PRD request. We've been here a couple of times before. Since the last time, we have had a neighborhood meeting, as Matthew said, that had approximately 15 to 20 participants. We've also had several individual phone calls with neighbors as they call in, and as well as met with a smaller group of neighbors, one-on-one, in between the workshop and this meeting actually. And so the plan has continued to evolve since the last time we were here and even since the last time at the workshop. And then we worked with staff as recently as today on a road alignment change that I think you've got 11-by-17 on there that we'll talk about a little bit later. So as Matthew said, the site, as you know, is south of Compton Road, just to the east of the Reserve. It does flow from the Reserve down to Bear Branch and then under Compton and on to the north. Our sewer will come from Bear Branch and all other utilities from Compton Road. All the zoning in the area is of a residential nature. House in the Reserve, here's a picture from our southwest corner looking toward the northeast. As you can see, it's mainly an open pasture field. It's got pretty good fall across the site down toward Bear Branch. And then an example of some of the townhomes that are being built next door in Generals Run. Since this picture was taken, I think four or five more buildings in there have been started or completed. Then the only existing structure on our site currently. We are requesting the PRD zoning still. This plan has about 181 dwelling units. The original request, when we first came to you, was 281, so it's about a 30% reduction overall. We've reduced the cottages down from an initial request of 175 down to the 64. As Matthew said, that brings it smaller than or less units than the Generals Run next door. The large lots, we have increased those size. Those directly abut the Reserve. We initially just had those on the west side of that roadway coming in from Compton. With this new plan, we have lined both sides of the street and increased those size to be 12,000 square feet to match the size of the Reserve lots. And then our smaller lots, we added some, we increased the minimum lot size along the eastern boundary at the request of a neighbor, and then the rest of those stayed at the minimum of 6,000 square feet, and those will be the yellows. The overall kind of backbone, skeleton of the development, the road network, stayed generally the same. We did add some curves in there to try to soften that. What we had before was very urban, straight-line design. This, we've tried to soften up a little bit, make it more of a casual flow through the neighborhood. We are maintaining a HOA, be managed by a third party. All of our utilities will still be underground, and then all the roads will be public for the single-family lots, and then with the cottages, that will be managed, and those will be private roads. One of the, in addition to the density, one of the more larger things that we did here was pull the entire development away from Bear Branch to try to get as much of the plan out of the floodplain itself as we could. Almost the entire site itself is out of the floodplain. We do catch a couple of corners of a few buildings, but we will raise those pads in compliance with the city's floodplain ordinance. We're continuing to propose this project to be built in phases. We predict about three phases for the single-family and about three phases for the cottages. That first phase will come off Compton and continue into the site from there. As I said, we broke down our smaller lots into two-size ranges. The orange here, there's 20 of those. Those are the larger 8,000-square-foot lots. And then the yellow ones, there's about 62 of those. Those will be the 6,000-square-foot lots. We've added some curves here. We've also added that pocket park for the residents and children to have kind of a passive play area, go out there and play some football, baseball, whatever it is that they would like to do. We've also got a walking trail presented or proposed through this area, and we've got sidewalks along all of our streets in this section as well. And we've got connectivity back to the main walking trail that goes along the detention ponds and down by Bear Branch. The houses here have stayed the same essentially since we originally reviewed these. They're going to be a mixture of one- and two-story homes, a minimum of 1,800 square feet in size, and sodded front yards at a minimum. The homes will be consistent between the two different lot sizes here. The only difference will be land size. We have maintained the same building materials. It's the brick, stone, cement board siding. If you'll remember, when we first came, there were some concerns from the neighbors about vinyl that we had proposed for these lots, and we have changed that and continued to maintain that we won't have vinyl except for trim and soffit areas. Couple of examples of the buildings themselves. There will be front-entry garages. You can see those doors are treated architecturally. We've set these houses back off the road far enough so that four cars can park in each driveway. The larger lots, as I mentioned, we bumped those up to 12,000 square foot minimums. We increased from 22 to 35 of these lots, and the other standards pretty much stayed the same. One- and two-story homes, minimum of 2,200 square feet in size, which is, matches the Reserve restrictions. Again, sodded front yards. We have continued to maintain that no wood or PVC fences will be allowed along the rear of these lines, abutting the Reserve. That was at the request of our neighbors in the Reserve, requesting the same setbacks, a 20-foot front, 5-foot side, and 20-foot rear. And then the same materials here, as you see across the street, or in the smaller lots, brick, stone, cement board siding, and the same elevations that we've had throughout, proposed for these. Lot of interest in the roofline, good quality materials, good design here. The cottages, one of the main things that we've done here is decrease the density. It's went down significantly. I think somewhere near 65% from the original request. This seemed to be where a lot of energy was concentrated to begin with from the neighbors, and so this is where we made the biggest cuts. We also softened this design from a very straight 90-degree road layout, tried to incorporate some curves, have some pockets of green space, and really present well back to Compton as well as internally to the development itself. Here, there's still one-story homes. You've got an optional bonus room that can be built out upstairs if they'd like. They are minimum 1,300 square feet in size. Lot of landscaping throughout these developments, and they're considered rear-entry garages with the front facing toward Compton or internal to the development itself. Here, we're still using the same material palette, brick, stone, cement board siding, and we've limited any vinyl to about 15% on the front and rear elevations here. One thing we've done since the last time we were before you is really develop a new building elevation specifically for this project. That side right there will be what you see from Compton. That'll be what's facing Compton and then internally to the development. The garage side, you can see we have muted these garage doors. They're not stark white, they're in more neutral color. They're architecturally treated. A lot of interest on this roofline here. You can see about four different options above the garage there. In addition, you can see a little bit of it in this elevation and this rendering is the landscaping that'll be between the garage and the street there to help break that up even more. So these buildings are pulled off the road enough to let two cars park in each driveway, plus the two-car garage. Amenities, we've kept pretty much the same package except we've enhanced it some. The main structural amenity is going to be central to the community, right here with the clubhouse. That still has the large patio gathering area out beside of it. We have added a pool in this area. We did not have that last time. We have maintained community gardens in this area. We have added the pocket park that I discussed earlier over in the smaller lots. And then, of course, we've also maintained our walking trails throughout the open space and sidewalks along all of our public streets on both sides. Access, access plan looks very similar, if not identical, to what we've had all along. Primary access point along Compton. Our traffic study shows us that we need to do exactly what the Reserve did, which is build a left-turn lane coming from the east and then build a right-turn lane coming from the west. We still have the connection to Marygold, just like it's been planned with the Reserve master plan. And then we've still continued to show two future stubs to the south, which will connect into Osborne as those properties develop at some point. And landscaping, one of the concerns of the neighbors early on was how close these buildings were to Compton. And so at their request, we've extended a berm that will mimic the Reserve's berm with the landscaping along Compton, and we have pulled these units back. We're at least 80 feet off the right-of-way in these locations. And of course, we'll have a lot of landscaping throughout. We want it on both sides of these units as residents will be seeing both sides. Lastly, the 11-by-17 that you should have there, the main reason for that was the...
Matt, I'm going to ask the cable department to switch to the laptop that's up here at my desk. Thank you.
The, in a couple of the recent days, staff became concerned with the road that comes off of Compton and it heading straight south. They're worried that may become a kind of speech drag strip, if you will. So they, we worked with staff, come up with a couple of alternatives, and have really reconfigured the intersection with Marygold so that that traffic, in order to go south there, has to make a right turn. So I think that we're certainly happy with that design, and I think staff is satisfied as well. So with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. If you'd like to hear from the applicant or somebody from Goodall, they'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have as well.
All your streets, public roads?
Where we've got single-family lots will be public. Once you get inside with the cottages, that will be private and maintained by the HOA.
But just the cottages?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
The garages, there's, any of the garages that are front-end loaded, are they all recessed or any of them stub-nosed garages?
We have, what's your intent there? No, the smaller lots. The larger lots will all be recessed from the front at least 10 feet. And then you've seen the cottage elevations, I mean, that is kind of what that is.
Correct.
They're not recessed or...
They're flush.
Or not recessed, they're flush. They're flush with the kind of the front of the house.
Would you repeat that, Matt, because some of the microphone cannot pick up his comments?
Yes, the garage on those is flush with the front of the house.
That would be on the ones in the yellow?
Yes, the yellow and the orange. Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is appropriate time to bring it up, but since you're up there, I'll ask.
Yes, sir.
Some of the questions that have been asked to me, and this would be more with respects to restrictions, they, I had some neighbors show me pictures of other developments that had similar, like cottages. You've already made the comment that it's going to have a two-car garage with an area enough of a setback for two more cars to be able to be parked in the driveway, and I don't know if this is even doable or not, but questions about having, you know, where people are overflowing into the street. They were specifically showing a particular development here in town where it had similar, but there was just lines of cars parked in front. Is that a possibility or probably not doable at all?
I mean, the, what we used was a ratio for, you know, four cars per house, which I think is the requirement for the single-family residences in ordinance. With this particular product, with our age demographic, the age-targeted, in general, you know, they don't have the two, three, four teenagers at home that are generating those extra cars. Are they ever not going to have too many cars in the parking lot? I'm not going to sit up here and say 100%. But I'll let Kevin at.
My name is Kevin Estes with Green Trails Development, 2925 Berry Hill Drive. This will be our fourth or fifth development of this type with the cottages, and in all those, we'll provide off-street parking on the private drives. They'll be perpendicular, and then we'll also have additional parking at the clubhouse to handle visitors. So if for some reason there's a large event, we'll have additional parking outside of the driveways for guests in these developments.
Okay. Now, Matt, I think you alluded earlier that the, there'd be sufficient space in each driveway for four cars, not counting the garage.
For the smaller lot, for the yellow and the orange lots, there will be, as well as for the larger lots, 12,000-square-foot lots. Yes, sir.
So four cars will be able to park in the driveway in addition to the garage?
Yes, sir.
Not in the cottages.
Not in the cottages.
On the cottages, since that's private streets, will that be gated or anything?
At this time, we're not planning any gated features.
Okay. Are you planning sidewalks along those streets as well?
Some of those walks do have, some of those streets do have sidewalks. We've got the sidewalks, we find the page in the book and I'll...
Page six.
Sidewalks are out there, yeah, those walking trails.
On page two, kind of where the inner, where it forms a loop, kind of in the upper right-hand corner of the cottages, we've got those on the internal side of that. And then the first entrance into that, we've got them on the left-hand side there. So we've got them placed strategically so that each unit has access to a sidewalk, either directly in front of their unit or directly across the street.
So the public roads will have curb and gutters with streetlights. The private streets then, are you going to do curbs on those, ribbon curbs or what? What are you doing on the lighting?
We may use extruded curb, but it'll definitely have some sort of curbing. I don't know if it'd be, the curb and gutter, maybe use a rollover curb. It's a little easier to cut the driveway then. We will have streetlights in there. Probably, we will likely just use MEDs to keep it consistent throughout, I believe.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Taylor, the extra parking you were talking about, I guess that was in, is that in the cottage areas that we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
And are we talking about like some of those little areas where there might be like room for just maybe five or six cars to park in a little parking pad area?
I would say we would look to place those strategically in the, kind of the curved in the open space areas so that it's convenient for each person. We'll have two or three different facilities there.
And so you would probably draw those in before they would go to the City Council?
Yes, ma'am. We would draw those on our construction plans and, yes.
In here?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
In the book. So I think we're used to seeing those extra little spots and understand what you're talking about, and I know you do that.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Estes?
I got one more. Question was brought up about, you know, you look at the neighborhoods around this area, and then the minimum square foot of, let's talk about the cottages. So we're saying from 1,300 would be the, excuse me, yeah, 1,300 to 1,500 square feet is the minimum square feet of the cottage. And I know that you might have knowledge of maybe what the minimum square feet, say in Hawks Ridge, might be from a restriction standpoint. Do you have any idea?
From a restriction, I know that the houses in there, I think generally are routinely in the 1,600-square-foot range.
Okay.
Going off past history, I'd say the restrictions are probably more like 1,400 square feet.
Okay, all right. I'm done.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll, before I open the public hearing, in case you've never attended one of our public hearings before, I'll briefly go over the rules we're conducting by. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward to the microphone that would like to speak. If so, just come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address if you would. We have quite a few people here tonight that'd like to speak, so please keep your comments as brief as possible. We will be observing the three-minute time limit per speaker, but we ask you to be succinct as possible in your comments. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and we'll attempt to answer those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. Make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission and not to the developer or to other members of the audience. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Philip Unberger. I reside at thirty-two, twenty-two Falk Rock Drive, and I hope we're gonna be able to see a presentation here. If they'll open up my line. I am a resident of the Reserve subdivision. A lot of folks here tonight are here with us. If you raise your hands, if you're concerned about this development. We're excited, first of all, to talk about the development. We know that that area is going to be, to be, have new homes on it, and we look forward to that, because we know that that's going to finish up our subdivision. And we had a lot of opportunity to talk about this over the last few weeks, but we do have some concerns. And we do thank, thank the developers for coming back to us and talking a little bit to us about the opportunities there, where they can change things to make you all happy as well as us. But we do still have concerns about density and design, increased traffic and congestion, and water flow concerns. First of all, density, the density has gone down dramatically. But I guess, one question I would ask you is, you know, if you take out, how many acres of the development is actually floodplain? And if we do that, you know, what is the density based on, on what is usable acreage? I think that's a very important thing, because if you, if you line it out, obviously, it's three, three, I think, three point oh eight. But what is the, the actual developable, developable land in that area? If we know that, then we can better have an idea of what, you know, the density would be. You know, and I did ask, I said, you know, how many units could you get into this area if you did RS twelve? And didn't get an answer on that. But anyway, I'd like to, you know, further that. And one of the areas, if you, which y'all earlier put up on the screen, all the areas around this, and I apologize, mine is not coming up over there, but you all put this up earlier, every single subdivision or development in our area is RS twelve or RS fifteen, except General's Run. And I think General's Run came in under the cover of darkness. But anyway, we, we are concerned. This is, this is a multi-use development, much like Puckett Station. Puckett Station is a great development, but I think they have the area to be able to do something like this. We're cramming three different types of properties on one small sixty, less than sixty-acre development, probably more like fifty after you take out floodplain. So we are concerned about that. High roads and high density frequently lead to parking issues like Mrs. Jones, Ms. Jones, I apologize, I don't know. But that is a concern. And previously, they did have parking areas, but I would like to see that before this is developed, or, you know, before it goes on, if it's, if y'all would give us the ability to look at that prior to, prior to being approved. Obviously, concerns are, they've added more of the six to eight thousand foot lots. And as I said, all surrounding areas are, either R twelve or S fifteen, decrease uniformity to the very property, unlike areas surrounding it, or over-usage of resources. Schools are covered up, and also, design, I will, just one quickly, the homes proposed to be offered in this development will complement and continue the quality of the development exhibited in the surrounding neighborhoods, and we don't see that in this. But anyway, as again, respectfully request that you deny this motion, but I do appreciate your opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Unberger. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Beth Brown, eight thirty-three Compton Road, Murfreesboro. First of all, thank you again for letting us be here to discuss this PRD, and I thank you for your dedication to continuing to hear us out. We've learned a lot. We've had a lot of meetings, and I think we, you have new advocates in all of us, because we see what you all have to sort through and deal with, and so I just wanna say thank you. Now, let's get to it. I think from the beginning, our major concern was the density, as we all know. And, you know, density is leading to the traffic on the, it's an already busy, busy street, Compton Road, and the water runoff was another thing that's going into a federally designated impaired stream, which was a concern. I don't, I don't ever see that coming off. I don't know. But anyway, I wanna, I wanna break it down for you. I think, we've all seen this, and, you know, it's just where the RS, it's RS ten, it's RS fifteen, it's RS twelve. So that's what I'm saying, this is the last piece in this little section here, and I, I know that PRD is there, and it's, it's, you know, happening. But for us, this is really the last piece along this stretch of road that could be, could be something. So I'll have to say, I just want everybody to, like, let's look at the numbers together. So in the eleven-by-fourteen handbook, if you'll look at page two, and it says, total area fifty-eight acres, and it says a hundred and eighty-one total units. So I'm not texting up here, I'm on my calculator on my phone, and when I did the math, I get three point seven seven density per buildable acre. So if somebody could tell me, out of fifty-eight acres, and we're figuring the density on buildable property, true? What's the, what's the acreage? So I'm, I'm taking it, just from untrained eye, I don't have a scale, I haven't run the numbers. But to me, looking at page two, I'm taking out ten acres and saying forty-eight acres you can build on. You take forty-eight, you divide it, you get the math, we're down to, we're at three point seven seven. If we really ran it by the numbers, it would come to three point, what, he's got three point oh eight, but what I'm getting on buildable property is three point seven seven. Is that the real number? I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, I've, there's, you know, a lot of flood property. You can't say, we have a hundred acres on Swamp Road, and you can only build, build on ten. You can't figure the density on a hundred of that, can you? Is, I'm good, I mean, I'm just asking the question, is that true?
I'll ask the staff to talk about that after the public hearing.
Okay. So that's, yeah, as far as how many acres, anyway. So from my rough estimate, all along, we've asked for a hundred and fifty units for this piece of property. I think even the commission calculated this, this planning commission calculated this at the last meeting, and a hundred and fifty, if you watch the video, it's documented, that's the number we came to, and we're still at one eighty-one. And a lot of that is in the yellow. It's in the six thousand square foot homes, it's in the eight thousand square foot homes. It, to me, is extremely tight in there. The side set block, side setback in those lots is five feet. I'm five foot four. There's a house here, there's a house, it's very, to me, seemingly very tight. I would, and I'm, I'll tell you, I'm not against a PRD. I like that it's all laid out, I like that we know what's gonna go on as far as siding goes, what's going on as far as rock and brick. We know where the stone, we, I like the guidelines, and I like the parameters, and I'm not opposed to this. Matt has been wonderful, Kevin has, they've made concessions, they have. I'm just saying, let's knock down this part back here, and get it down to one fifty closer, and maybe let's give a little more than five feet on each side. That, that's where I would come in. And I, too, would like, I know, adding those parking pads, you know, if we go forward, I'd, I'd still think, you know, let's tap the brakes before we move forward, 'cause there's still a little, a little work to be done on the plan. And one question I did wanted to ask for my family that lives across the road, and he's not here tonight, but he's concerned about flooding. I know at Bear Branch, the water goes down a lot in Sinkholes, it comes out right behind his property, which is, it's gonna get all the runoff from this new subdivision, it's gonna come down the creek, and it's gonna end up behind him. So, you know, it's hard to know in this county where the water's coming and going. So what's our recourse if the design is wrong? Just would like to know. You know, if the design is wrong, what, then what might be his recourse in the future? I think that would, that'd make him happy to hear an answer on that. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Brown. Anybody else?
Good evening. Once again, my name's Kevin Estes, and I wanna speak very short. First, I'd like to thank the community for meeting with us, and they were very pleasant, which was, sometimes you walk in a community means as a developer, that's not the case, but this community was wonderful, we enjoyed meeting with them. We have tried to listen very hard, and not just hear, but listen, as my wife would say, she always excuses me of hearing and not listening. And reduced the density quite a bit, and it was very important to us, because when we was out there, we kept hearing about flooding, so we really wanted to pull all this out of the floodplain, and hopefully we'll have, it won't be major, but more volume available afterwards than it is before within the floodplain. And, you know, once again, we, we hope this moves forward. I do remember the one fifty number, but I also remember that we kind of threw out the round fifty acres, so we did try to go back and find that density at three units an acre, to try to make this more consistent with the RS twelve zoning. And as far as density and all, staff's much better at answering those questions than I am. But I really just wanted to thank the community, and thank y'all for inviting us back here.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Estes.
Hello, my name is Hugh Jones. I reside at nineteen seventeen Baskinbrook Court in the Garrison Cove subdivision. I spent my youth growing up at eight twenty-four Compton Road. My mother still lives there, eight twenty-four, and it's five acres that adjoins this development. The process for discussion and input for civic development that the commission has allowed, I wanna commend. The commission's been wise in considering this development, has had two deferrals, and continuously included the public comment in the process. I wanna point out that Matt with SEC and Kevin with Green Trails and his partners have been very open and cordial with all of our communications and the work with. They've made big changes, and they've looked for accommodations, but the six thousand, eight thousand square foot track home sections is still a no-go. This is a stark contrast with all the surrounding developments in this area, with a little exception, I guess, to General's Run. The photos and the examples I've handed out is Indian Park. Given to understand, these are six thousand square foot lots, and it's a lot of traffic, parking on the streets in this area. I believe the street is about thirty feet wide, is there. In the six thousand to eight thousand square foot area in Valley Brook, in that section, I'm given to understand that the street width is around twenty-four feet there. I'd like, the commission maybe could ask Matt what exactly the width of that street is. So with the parking issues in that area on the street, I think there might be some concerns I'd like to bring up that it might be okay to say no to this style development, might be okay to say not quite yet, as you've done before with deferrals, on this density issue. The density's not conforming to all the established developments in the surrounding area. If a casual observer were to take a look at the plat, I think the design looks impressive, the artist's renderings are very nice, and the type of housing choices are very attractive. But when viewed with all the surrounding established neighborhoods, the density is still very tight, and the housing sticks out like a sore thumb in that one area of the development, with tight streets, tight housing, cars parked on the street, which present obstacles possibly to emergency services, civic services, street sweepers, garbage removal, and school buses, and also children's safety. Okay, so you probably hear a lot from citizens that say with the thing, not in my backyard. When looking at all the surrounding neighborhoods, I'd just point out that almost everybody has the same-sized backyard, except this one area with the six thousand square feet proposed in Valley Brook. Might propose that they drop fifteen or twenty homes in that area, and increase the lot size, it's bigger than eight thousand square feet or six thousand, and I feel that most everyone in our area would probably be acceptable to that. So again, just to close, thank you for this process from the commission with Kevin and Matt from SEC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anybody else?
It's a pleasure to speak with you this evening. My name's Steve Murray. My wife Jessica and our family live on thirty-three sixty Clovercroft in the Reserve. My strong concern about this rezoning application on the property we're discussing tonight is strictly focused on two things, density and the economic impact to the existing neighborhoods. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. We've lived in Murfreesboro off and on for the past ten years. Due to my career, I've dragged the family all over the southeast, and we also had a stop in Chicago along the way. I've lived in Atlanta twice in the past twenty years, and like commercials that you now see about Nashville, I'm here to tell you, I think Atlanta's a perfect example of an area where poor density planning led to a less than desirable outcome for the city and surrounding competing suburbs. When we moved to Murfreesboro the first time, we built out in Berkshire, out in the Blackman Community. Berkshire is a reminder, is another development that has cottages, entry-level homes, and these estate homes. When my career called for another move, we were stunned when homes that were just the street behind us were selling considerably less than what I had paid to build my estate home. And I lost over fifty thousand dollars when I had to sell that house to move. Upon our return to Murfreesboro here, we chose Reserve because the acreage around the development was zoned for use similar to what the Reserve was. I have no problem with the development. Someone who moves, I love new homes. I don't, when I get on the road or I travel, I wanna feel confident that my roof is gonna be good, my AC, HVAC is all gonna be well. But the development around the Reserve, from my perspective, needs to remain either RS twelve or RS fifteen for the entirety of the property. You know, the Chamber of Commerce works real hard to attract white-collar jobs to Murfreesboro. And folks who meet this criteria are gonna always wanna find a really nice place to live. Should you allow this project to proceed, I'm afraid that we're not, and we're not in a place right now to expand the infrastructure to support the surrounding area. You're removing the reserve and the surrounding neighborhoods as potential landing spots for these relocating families. You may question this position, but again, trust me, I've moved seven times in twenty years with the family. I, I, I've been through a number of career, you know, corporate relocations, and all we wanted to do is try and find a nice neighborhood to call home. With an increase in density, Compton Road, without a doubt, would become a dangerous stretch of road during school hours in particular. Would imagine the personal injury attorneys here in town are gonna get to know Compton very well. Additionally, I, I recognize and expect that as density issues only continue to get worse, and recognizing there's still undeveloped property on the south side of the parcel, we hear tonight that there's an application to address that part, that surrounding area as well. You know, so if this, if this is, is granted, if this rezoning request is granted, I expect that future rezoning requests with precedence are gonna be on the developer's side. For those reasons, and for many more that I can address due to time constraints, I respectfully request the planning committee deny the request for rezoning, and only allow the property in question to be, continue to be developed as RS twelve or RS fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, and good evening. I'm William Berry. I live at seven forty-four Stone Mill Circle. The good news about technology is I was able to get online and see the last meeting. The best news was I could get online and see the last meeting, and how I did. I hope I do a bit better tonight. Maybe I've learned from that. There are ninety-seven homes, as you know, in the Reserve. Lots number eleven through thirty-two, twenty-one lots, are rated for a story and a half house up to twenty-four hundred. house up to 2,400 square feet. So we, there's already an inconsistency between what they're saying, there's some, there's comparison to their biggest home to our smallest homes. The balance of the lots are required to have 2,800 square feet for a single-story and 3,000 for a story-and-a-half to two-story. I spoke with Donna Bates, who's the head of the, or not the head, but she's with the management company. We looked at the median, we tried to come up with the median average of the size of the homes in the reserve. It's somewhere in the mid 4,000s. If you take the approximate current market value of these homes, we could say that it's definitely above $400,000. To do, keep the math simple, I'm going to call it 4,000, I'm going to say 100 lots. So basically, the people of the reserve today have invested $40 million in that subdivision to live there. And we would like to have that protected for the obvious reasons that's already been brought up. I told you when I came here before, I talked about my expectations. I hope to do a better job of that tonight. The, but we did came down over, over a period of time in nine months, we came down from North Carolina a bunch of times. We looked at houses, we looked at houses, and we looked over at over 25 homes. We kept coming back to the reserve and nothing was available that was at all suitable for us. Finally, after nine months, we came in, the realtor showed us a house that had been on the market for less than a week and said, "If you like it, you better start signing something." And we did. Mr. Wade, I hope the nameplates are correct. Mr. Wade, I've lived out in the country. I am truly sorry for the view that you've lost. I can relate with that. It must be frustrating to be in your position and not do anything about what happened. But you all can do something about us. We don't have the view. It's not the view. And it's not that we're afraid of change. The view I want and my expectations is 150 more units, just like what's in the reserve. We, I don't personally have a problem with this exit road. Frankly, we're unpositioned. That makes me about the second or third person out of the subdivision if things go wrong. I'm fine with it. I think it's great. Just looking over my notes here. I would, I would hope that the builder, that by denying this, can come back and have the opportunity to build 150 units. If the math is correct, and I'm sure it is, there's 40 million in this and what's sitting there, there's $60 million worth of homes that can be built out there. I said before, and this gentleman I think said it extremely well, there are, we got a lot of people moving in, and there are people that's going to look for a home like that. And there's not a lot of place to put that. And when you put something else in there, that is definitely going to take away from what is here. Kind of in closing, I want to thank the board. As you know, I'm new to town, but I understand it's, you don't do three hearings very often. I do want to thank Mr. Taylor and his group. I know that from what I've seen the last, the meeting before this as well, that they have worked hard and I applaud that. Like several other people said, it looks nice. It just doesn't belong there. So I hope that the developer is very successful in building 150 more units, making about $80 million in the process of doing that, and we protect our current investment. So I request that you, our respectful request, that you deny this. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Anybody else?
My name is Deo Sanders, 745 Stone Mill Circle. Again, thank you guys for allowing us to speak tonight. And I don't want to be repetitive, but I'll talk about three of the hot-button issues that I think are important. I'm from Dallas, Texas, and when I go into neighborhoods in Dallas that are communities in Dallas, subdivisions to Dallas, like Murfreesboro is to Nashville, one thing that I notice where we have some opportunity is consistency with the development in specific, in certain areas. So when you drive to a part of town, you know what, know what to expect when you get over there. And I think, just like we come in, come in on Medical Center Parkway, how beautiful the landscaping is, how everything is zoned exactly the same, I think that's what everyone is asking for today, is that, you know, if somebody's driving around in our neighborhood on either side of that property, the, the houses are pretty similar, but that one piece of land is going to be something completely different. And I think along with everyone else, that's, that's one of the key arguments. Something else is the, the density. You know, this, the last gentleman mentioned the, the importance of, of property values and things like that. I would, I would add to that quality of life and quality of living. When you get off work, you don't want to be in traffic for an hour getting home on Compton Road. They are building other units, which haven't been really talked about today, but that huge apartment complex behind McDonald's and then on down the road, it's a new development going to be, going to be going in, I think it's called Tuscany. The current infrastructure in that general area is, I mean, it's not good right now. And I think it's up to us to have vision of what we want Murfreesboro to look like in five years from now. And not just what, you know, what's convenient now, but, and I know that's what you guys are here for, but I would just ask that you consider, you know, when people come to Murfreesboro and they go to certain areas and parts of town, we want, we want it to be consistent. We don't want it to be inconsistent. And so that's pretty much all I have to say, but thank you guys for allowing us to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Adam Terrell. I live at 604 Gary Bowman Court. I just moved here about eight weeks ago. I just got out of the United States Navy. Three years ago, I bought my house in the reserve. Great expectations set a while ago. I was looking around. We looked for months. We looked between duty stations, between deployments, and we found the reserve. It's beautiful, Compton Road, like-minded people, spacious lots, and the traffic, they just resurfaced the road. They're nearly finished, and the traffic is already pretty bad for that road. From my understanding, it's going to be 10 to 20 years before that road is given consideration for widening. I also had the same question on the buildable area that was addressed to you, sir. And you can say the 60 acres and the numbers, but what's actually buildable? The cottage just talked about sidewalks and that there's two additional parking spots, but do those parking spots impede the sidewalks? Do those four parking spots impede the sidewalks? When you start blocking sidewalks, you start parking in the street. I've lived a lot of places in the Navy and our houses, big and small, I've been to a lot of areas that are overpopulated. And with overpopulation comes crime and other things. And I would like that not to happen on Compton Road. Another gentleman said, 100 houses, $40 million. Well, there's closer to 200 houses. That's over $80 million in what people have put into their houses. And I'd like that to be taken into consideration. I don't know what the development, the developers have put into their plans, but that's the cost of doing business. So whenever you guys consider what they have put into developing this, please don't underestimate what we've put in to developing our houses. Sorry about my nervousness. In closing, I respectfully request that the planning commission deny the request for rezoning and maintain the RS-12 and RS-14. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chris O'Neil. I'm at 393 Maple Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I represent Good All Homes, which would be the builder for the cottages, not the single-family homes, but the cottages. I just wanted to speak tonight to add a little context to the discussion. First of all, I want to also thank the, those that have been involved in this process for you allowing us to be here tonight, for the community next door who has been very gracious in their feedback, and I hope that they have seen that we have taken that feedback and made adjustments to the plan. But specifically, when, in terms of the cottages, there's two things that have been discussed tonight: density and really property values. From a density standpoint, this is going to be an age-targeted product. Our company does both. We build this same home in four or five different communities. Some are age-restricted and some are age-targeted. Interestingly enough, they really kind of serve the same demographic. I'll, I'll provide some numbers for you. In one of our communities that we have where we actually sell this product along with single-family homes, we know that in the cottages, an average of 1.3 persons live in the cottages compared to almost four in the single-family homes. I say that just to say from a traffic standpoint, and I understand traffic. I drove here from Nashville tonight and, and it was very, very crowded. But from a traffic standpoint, the burden that the folks that live in those cottages will put on the roads is going to be less than those that live in the single-family homes. So that's, that's one thing to consider. Second thing is, the reason we've even brought the cottages to the forefront here is we continue to get feedback that there is not homes for those that are downsizing and want to find something that they don't have to have yard maintenance and, and they don't want to keep up with the 2,500, 3,000, or 4,000 square-foot home, and they're looking for that, and that seems to be underserved in this market. Second, when it comes to property values, I do want to point out that while our cottages are smaller, typically the price per square foot on those are going to be higher than you'll see in a single-family home. And, and also, when it comes to an appraisal, typically when an appraiser, and there may be an appraiser in the house that can speak to this, when they do an appraisal for a home in the community next door, they're typically going to find like comparisons in other communities, probably in the same existing communities where they will start. It's very unlikely that they will use a comp from the cottages for their single-family home. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Nelson, and I live at, let's see, 3241 Pheasant Run Trail in the reserves. And I have the same concerns as my other counterparts here that live in our community. But most importantly, I want to speak to you not only as a mother of twin girls and a wife, but as one of those executives that moved to this area and decided to make our home and the home for my family here in Murfreesboro. Originally, when I relocated here with my family, we lived in Annandale, which is not in Brentwood. And that just wasn't for us. We, nice homes, congested traffic, other homes all over the place. It took me almost the same amount of time to get downtown than it takes me right now from Murfreesboro. So we looked in the area and we found the reserves. And I think, I want to make sure that you don't forget, we're not saying that we don't want the land developed. We want it developed. I want multiple entrances and exits for emergency vehicles. I want my family to be safe. So that's not what we're saying tonight. What we're saying is that we respectfully ask that the same type of homes that we have in the reserves be built in that, and developed in that area. There's no problem with what you all have shown us. It's beautiful and it's nice, but it's not the area for it. If you were to ask me today, if I would move my family from where we lived before to the reserves with this type of development next to it, I would say no. And not because it's not nice, but because the density, because of the traffic. I already get up at 5:30 in the morning to get out of my, my subdivision, to get on 24, to drive another hour to get to the Batman Building. So it, it has nothing to do with not wanting the land developed. We just want it developed properly. So I respectfully request that the zoning committee deny this request and that it be developed RS-12 or RS-15. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Stan Vaught, 6675 West Tremble Road in Milton. Members of the planning commission, I do not envy your job at all. I sat in the same position for 10 years on the county planning commission, and sometimes it's a very tough call to have to listen to neighbors, constituents, property owners, and decide what is in the best interest of everybody involved. Most of the people that I've observed tonight speaking toward this, they live next door to it or right around it. They've got a vested interest in it. I probably don't. I've got it from a difference perspective. We have used Compton Road my entire life as a way to go around Murfreesboro, to keep, to keep from increasing the traffic down through there. If you remember back when I was here at previous planning commission meeting or public hearing, I talked about that. I think myself and Commissioner P. probably live further away from this development than anybody here. So is it going to impact my property values? Probably not. But it does create great concern. Terry and I do own some property very nearby. And all of us know, and especially, you know, and I, and forgive me if I do not address you correctly tonight, but I feel like I'm at Brown's store and I want to have this discussion with you, Doug, or Bob, or Kathy, because I know all of you very well, and Ken, that i, if you logically, you know, I want to back up and logically look at this and say, you know, the whole north side of Murfreesboro has probably all been developed RS-12 or RS-15 for the last 20 years, 25 years, ever since I've been in the real estate business, Bob, and you know how long that's been, and Doug. And the north side of Murfreesboro has always been that attractive side to people that wanted stability in their neighborhoods, that wanted the quality of life that people demand. And you, you guys have done, I think, an outstanding job over the last 10 years, or 15 years really, to do with the growth that we've had, and we've ended up with most of what I would call the cluster developments or the small lot size up and down the interstate. And, you know, obviously you can't put everything up and down the interstate, but far-sighted enough, I think, you look at Veterans Parkway, those are some other areas that can be developed this way. My great concern is here. Everything that has been developed so far has pretty much been 12 or 15. And I'm looking on the map, and if you look at the south side of this, coming out of the 6,000 or 8,000 square-foot lot size, it's stubbed into what I would refer to as Dr. Smith's old place. HB, which was, his father was a neighbor of ours at Last Cashes. Well, how are you going to deny that gentleman when he comes in here and asks for 6,000 square-foot lots? And when you dump that out on Osburn Lane, you've got the next 20 acres, next it's. All of a sudden, we've got 40 acres that's going to be RS-6 or RSA. Well, if you do that, then you jump across the road, the Fairbrothers property, and, 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 you know, Mr. Charlie's getting on up in years and there's 100 acres there. Are you going to deny the Fairbrothers property the same type zoning that you just granted these people and the next people, and you carry it all the way to the backside of Northwoods? So then you not only impact Compton Road, you've impacted Osburn Lane, the Jarnet Lane, you've impacted the people that live in the Hamptons, you've impacted the people that live in Northwoods. And I got to doing a little calculating, calculating this afternoon. There's about 550 acres left to develop up and down Compton Road. And if you carry this same density all the way to Compton, you've overloaded that road. And we all know this. That's a state road. Half the state's money comes from the federal government. The federal government's just now passed a transportation bill. They've been three years in, in the making. They have not funded it yet. It'll be a long time. All of us will probably be gone before Compton Road gets widened to four or five lengths. That's my great concern. It's too much density in one place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught. Anybody else? Last call. Nobody else? In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Whitaker, several questions that were brought up. I don't know if you and Mr. Blomley want to try to address those.
Mr. Blomley, if you'd addressed the actual total acreage for the planning commission as far as how they calculate that, please.
Yes, sir. Members of the planning commission, there, there are different ways that you can calculate. Members of the planning commission, there are different ways that you can calculate acreage. The 3.08, I think as it's been pointed out, was based upon the entire acreage of the tract, taking the raw acreage of the tract, 58.7 acres, and using the number 181 units, and you get 3.08 acres. And I believe what was referred to the last meeting, the 150 units, there was a question that was brought up, and I kind of, off the cuff, I think the question was, was if it were zoned RS-12, approximately how many lots could be developed? You know, using a roughly three units per acre, or three lots per acre, that gets you at about 150 or so with the RS-12 zoning. Of course, a lot, or acre being 43,560 square feet, 12,000 times three is 36,000, and we take out some of that 43,560 square feet that would need to be dedicated for right-of-way and other public improvements. That's a ballpark figure. That may be a little bit high, may be a little bit low, but approximately 150 lots could be developed under the RS-12 zoning classification. Now, whether we use the total acreage to compute density, or whether we use the developable acreage, you know, it's just, it could be done either way. So if we take, and I don't know how much of the property is in the floodway, how much of the property is in the floodplain is not really relevant, because you can develop in the floodplain, but you can't develop in the floodway. But just hypothetically, if we knock that down to 50 acres, then you are looking at, I believe it was 3.62, and if we took 10 acres out, it was 3.77, if my math is correct. So that's a little bit of information on how we have arrived at the density calculations for this property.
On some projects, don't we give some density credit for green spaces, open spaces, on multifamily things usually, but when more area is left open and undeveloped, you know, we generally see a favorable consideration from staff and the planning commission on that.
But for multifamily developments that are zoned RM12, RM16, or RM22, we do allow density bonuses for multifamily developments for certain amenities that are provided, such as swimming pools, playgrounds, clubhouses, workout rooms, things of that nature. And many times in planned developments, Chairman Lamb, developers will build in certain amenities. And one of the reasons why developers submit a planned development as opposed to a straight zoning is in order to get an increase in density from what the, you know, the straight RS-12 zoning might allow. But the trade-off for that is that they are required on the front end to submit specifics of the type of development, the architecture of the development, the building materials, the development layout, the total number of units, and any substantial deviation from that plan requires, coming back to the planning commission, for an amendment. So it's a little bit of a trade-off, an increase in density, but also an increase in specificity from the developer. And I think that's, you know, one of the elements of that specificity is providing information on the amenities of the development and what will be left as open space. Whereas we wouldn't necessarily know those types of things with an RS-12 development, where there would be no requirements on, other than what a developer might build into his covenants, on the size of the houses, the architecture of the houses, the building materials. Here, you know what you're going to get.
Mrs. Brown had questions about flooding and recourse down the street. I don't know if you or Mr. Huddleston would like to address that.
I asked Mr. Huddleston to sit up here just for that reason tonight.
Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. You know, I will say, we've studied Bear Branch quite a bit. We've spent a lot of money on Bear Branch very recently, flood study, water quality, dye traces. Ms. Brown is correct in her statements that water flow in Murfreesboro, because of our limestone geology, can be very complex. What I will say is, the design team has considered all the available information. They are proposing to meet our standards, and the TDOT standards, as they'll be discharging into a box culvert under Compton Lane. And our community standards, they're meeting. Our community standards, we believe, to be protective of the stream quality. We also believe they're protective of the downstream property owners. And so from that standpoint, I think, while we haven't seen a detailed design, Matt Taylor and his team will design to city and TDOT standards. We believe those to be protective of the stream quality and protective of downstream flooding.
We see two large detention areas indicated on here, and you might say something about the more, there's more emphasis these days on stormwater drainage and detention.
Thank you for that lead-in right there. We have, we've adopted new stormwater rules. Those went into effect in October of 2008, and they do require the developers to do much, much more than we were seeing before 2008. And so these stormwater management areas, the detention ponds, the water quality buffers, all of that's intended to provide not just protection for flooding, but also improvement for quality. Ms. Brown mentioned the fact that this stream is listed by the state of Tennessee as it impaired. It's our goal as the city of Murfreesboro to get that stream off of the list. And so we've been working in that way. And in fact, with the plan that you see here, this stretch of Bear Branch will be more protected now than it currently is. There is no stream-side buffer here. A stream-side buffer will be required. There's no management of floodwaters coming off of this land. With this plan, there will be management of those excess flows. While it seems counterintuitive that a development could make things better, in this case, it could because perhaps of the additional land use, the historic land uses, and then also maybe the historic practices of land use immediately adjacent to that current.
Okay.
She asked the question, let's say this plan, the water plan doesn't work, and it negatively impacts a neighbor or something of that nature. What's the answer to the question is, what is the recourse of the individual or landowner that it may negatively impact?
You know, that's a very tough hypothetical question, and it's really a legal question. I would pitch a hot potato to Mr. Ives right here, but I will say that the city of Murfreesboro and our stormwater program and our public works program, we are constantly addressing, we're constantly bringing projects to this body, and then also to the city council, to help address some of the deficiencies we've had in the past. So we don't turn a blind eye to these types of issues. That's the city's role. We're going to be alert to those things, and then if we are detecting those things, we'll see what's within our toolbox to be able to address it. I think it's too broad an issue, really, from a hypothetical legal standpoint, to talk about a potential legal recourse. And if Mr. Ives wishes to expand that.
Let's let Mr. Taylor speak, and then I'll consult Mr. Ives.
Mr. Albert, along those lines, Mr. Huddleston's talked a lot about city regulations. We, as a company, and myself personally, we take those as personal and professional responsibilities, in that whenever we stamp and send that set of plans out, it's not going to cause any harm to our neighbors downstream somewhere. If, you've heard several people talk about how responsive we have been and willing to talk and work. That goes beyond these entitlement hearings. Anytime that we have a neighbor complaint, whether it's valid or not, we are always willing to come, react, evaluate, and help them understand the situation, or maybe rectify a situation. So my phone doesn't stop ringing after the zoning, or email, or visits. So we are there. We are local, so, you know, obviously, we want a good reputation, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Ives, do you want to go on the record with anything here?
Well, I know that, I mean, I understand the professional responsibilities of the engineers who are designing these, and I believe they all take that very seriously. The city reviews those designs. We take that responsibility very seriously, too. Ultimately, if there is a problem, the resolution is in the courthouse, if it can't be worked out any other way. I'm quite sure that city staff, if we felt that, based on experience, that a mistake had been made, and let's face it, we are human, none of us in here are perfect, and not all plans work out exactly the way they're intended to. But I think that over the last number of years, the success of the planning and engineering that has gone into flood control and making sure that the matters are not made worse, I think it's been very, very good. Is it perfect? Probably not, but it's been very, very good. We would do our best to have it rectified if it looked like there was, if there was any increased problem. And if the resolution isn't to people's satisfaction, the ultimate answer gets delivered in the courthouse.
Thank you, Ms. Ives.
Chairman Lamb, the other question that I heard was with regards to the width of the street in the small lot section, and Mr. Huddleston may have a more specific answer to that, but, you know, we would require that the street meet our standard street specifications, and that would be something that we would review at the time that construction plans came into our office. And we do have prescribed standard street widths that we would hold the development to.
I'd be glad to add to that, Chairman Lamb. Our minimum street width in this development would be 24 feet of pavement. It would be curb and gutter and sidewalk, included in a 40-foot right-of-way. And based on the design I see in front of me, I anticipate that's what they've used as a 40-foot right-of-way.
Okay. Chair. I think Mr. Jones passed out some photos of Indian Park, and I personally have looked through the plan book, and I can't see anything in the plan book that would lead me to think that anything built out here would look anything near what Indian Park would look like. If it did, I don't think it would have gone this far into the third public hearing before this body, if we had any idea that something would be built and look like that. I'm saying that just from my own personal vision on that.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like, I've heard a few things, and like to point out that at the end of our public hearings tonight, we do have a land use presentation from Kenneth Keyes, and I'd actually put that on the backside to save everybody having to sit through that after hearing this tonight. I'm not sure I shouldn't have put that on the front end, not to sacrifice you, but a few of the things that I heard tonight that I'd like to point out. Mr. Stan Vaught had pointed out that most of the north side of town was developed for RS-12 and 15, and he is correct. What that does prove is that there is a need for that home that people are downsizing to that doesn't exist on the north side. What you will hear tonight later in the presentation, the land use presentation, you will hear exactly that, and what you will hear is more mixed use as needed. Also, with the changes in our legislative, changes that is going to limit us in the future on annexing property, you will see densities go up, you will see more mixed use. Again, you'll hear this reiterated later on tonight in our plan use presentation. And as Mr. Chris O'Neal had pointed out, and he's actually right, there is a need for that. It doesn't exist, and this encompasses that. And as Mr. Blomey had pointed out early, part of the planned development is to give people assurance and to know what is actually going to be built. You get, we actually go out, we look at the homes that are built. They do have to match the illustrations, they do have to match what plans that they had given us, the material use. All that we do get to regulate. Straight zoning, we do not.
Questions from members of the planning commission? Let me just bring out one point, in case you're not familiar with the way the city conducts their approval process. We're conducting a public hearing tonight to determine whether we want to make a recommendation to the city council for approval or for disapproval. If we vote to approve it, it will go on to city council. City council will hold another public hearing at that level. Two of our members are city council members here, and they will get to see it again. You'll have the opportunity to come back and speak again. If we voted to turn it down tonight, the developer still has the right to petition the city council directly and take it on to the council himself, regardless of our recommendation. So in any case, before anything's going to be built there or developed there, it has to go before the city council. Any other comments or questions from the planning commission? If there are none, what are the wishes of this commission?
Bob, I haven't made much comment tonight. I've listened a lot. I've learned a little bit. The one thing that I'll assure everybody in the audience here is your neighbor's character is rarely defined or measured by their race, their gender, their religion, or the square foot of their home. I hope you wind up with good neighbors, no matter what size home they live in. I think that's very important. I'm going to move for approval.
I'm going to second.
Motion is made for approval, and since it all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, the motion carries. I want to thank everybody that came tonight and spoke, and like I said, there'll be another public hearing before the city council.
And Matt, before you come to the council, would you please have your book updated so that we can see where the parking spots are going to be? Thank you.
Okay. The second public hearing on our agenda tonight is an annexation petition for approximately 6.1 acres located along Roxborough Court. Zolt and Renee Mueller are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our second public hearing tonight, as you mentioned, is for an annexation request of 6.1 acres located along Roxborough Court. The property is a part of the Rose Ridge subdivision, lots 1 and 2 of the Rose Ridge subdivision, which is a subdivision that has been developed in the unincorporated Brothford County. These lots are located both on the east and west side of Puckett Creek. You'll see on the map in front of you, it's the area colored in orange. The lots actually have their road frontage along Colon Avenue, and Colon Avenue is a street that begins in the Plantation South subdivision, but then terminates on its north side in the Rose Ridge development. And you can see the lots both have frontage on Colon Avenue. One is a flag lot that goes all the way back like so. The eastern boundary of the subject property is Puckett Creek. And so Dr. Mueller has requested annexation of just the western portion of the property that is along the west side of Puckett Creek. Property is directly adjacent to the Scottish Glen subdivision. The next request that we have on the planning commission agenda is a rezoning request simultaneously with annexation to RS-10. But the matter for this public hearing is purely the annexation of the subject property. And you'll notice that there is a 10-foot gap at the southeastern corner of the property, called out as an approximately 10-foot wide gap. And that 10-foot wide gap in the subject area was included in order to not have to annex the area to the northeast of the subject property. You'll see the area where my cursor is located. That would essentially create an island of county inside the city limits, and so we have left that out as a means not to fully encircle that area. With that being said, both of the existing lots are contiguous with the existing city limits to the west and to the north. They are both within the city's urban growth boundary, and in addition, the property owners, Dr. and Mrs. Mueller, have petitioned the city for annexation. Staff has prepared an annexation feasibility study and plan of services, and has determined that services will be able to be provided to this property upon annexation. Just a little bit about Dr. Mueller's plans for the property. He does intend to develop this property with one or more single-family residential lots. The property right now does not have frontage on a public street if it were to be separated from the balance of the existing lots on Colon Avenue. from the balance of the existing lots on Colton Avenue. Therefore, Dr. Mueller would be required to re-subdivide this property so that it is, so that he combines it with the, one of the properties that he owns at the cul-de-sac of Scottish Drive or Roxburgh Court. There was area that was platted as common area in the Scottish Glen subdivision, and since that time, Dr. Mueller has purchased those properties, and in order to get the required amount of road frontage for any proposed lots that he were to subdivide in the subject area, he would have to combine the subject area with those two properties that he owns that were platted as common areas in the Scottish Glen subdivision. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the Planning Commission conducts a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, the Planning Commission will need to formulate a recommendation for the City Council. Dr. Mueller is present, as is Mr. Clyde Roundtree from Huddleston Steel, who is his representative.
Okay, Mr. Roundtree, do you have anything you'd like to say before we open the public hearing, wherever you are? Okay, I can see you back there. In that case, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Tracy Wolf, I'm at 4526 Scottish Drive. I am the HOA president for the Scottish Glen subdivision, so I maybe should wait until the next part of this, or do I speak now?
We're talking about the annexation right now only, sir.
Okay, I'm more worried about when he wants to build there.
Then the next one will be more-
Outstanding, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing. There's no questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval of the annexation.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, the next public hearing is a rezoning application for approximately 6.1 acres located along Roxburgh Court to be zoned RS 10 simultaneously with annexation. Zolt and Renee Mueller are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is the same property that we just considered for annexation. It is the western third of the, of lots 1 and 2 of the Rose Ridge subdivision. As I mentioned in my last presentation, Dr. Mueller would like to develop at least one single-family residential lot, perhaps more, on the subject property. The property would need to be combined with the properties that he owns that has been platted with the Scottish Glen subdivision. To give you an idea of the surrounding zoning, the property directly to the north is zone PUD, it's a part of the Victory Station Plan Development, and it is zoned for multifamily residential uses. The property directly to the west of the subject property is Scottish Glen, which is zoned RS 10, which is the same zoning classification that Dr. Mueller has requested. Directly to the southeast of the subject property is the Plantation South subdivision, which is zoned RS 12 and RS 10, and the Westview subdivision further to the south, which is zoned RZ. I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing. Mr. Roundtree and Dr. Mueller are both present if you have any questions for them.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Sorry about that. My name's Tracy Wolf, 4526 Scottish Drive. I'm the president of the HOA over there at Scottish Glen. We think it's great that he's doing something with that property back there, so I applaud him for doing that super job. I talked to Gertner, I found out this evening that we had this meeting tonight, and Gertner said that he was willing to go ahead and file the covenants for the Scottish Glen, and if he's willing to do that, we're welcome to have him into our HOA, as long as he files the requirements that we have, because he wants to bump into our subdivision and be part of our subdivision. That's what we, that's what I was informed. I just want you to know that we're for it, and if it's possible, if that's going to be part of your decision when you make it, because we are the subdivision that he's going to be bumped up against to. That's all I have to say.
That won't be part of our decision.
Interesting, okay, thank you. Then I don't like this idea, because if he's going to be part of our subdivision, he wants to use what we have there, it doesn't make sense then that he wants to be part of it, but then he doesn't want to follow the rules. Last thing we need is someone to come in and change the covenants of all the people, like earlier, that already have everything established.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is John Fuchs, and I live at 4309 Roxburgh Court in the Scottish Glen subdivision. I moved to Murphysboro about a year and a couple of months ago, and I live about, oh, 300 yards away from this empty lot, and when I purchased my home, there were still many homes along Roxburgh Court that were still being built, and my realtor and the builder, Old South, had purported to me that that land at the end of the court was a floodplain and that there would be no homes built there. Now, again, I understand that, you know, things change, and that's fine, but I am vehemently opposed to having any additional homes built at the end of my street. We just had our street paved not more than probably three or four months ago, because the construction in Scottish Glen had been completed, and now somebody is wanting to come in and build some additional homes. Apparently, one of the questions I would have for the commission is, well, how many homes is this person going to build? I'm concerned a little bit based on the last hearing that if somebody can build 3.7 R10 homes on an acre, and they're six acres, that maybe he's going to build a small subdivision. Again, I'm just a homeowner there, I will not gain anything from having this person build these homes close to where my street is. What I will gain is much additional traffic in the long run, in the short run, there'll be obviously many construction vehicles going up and down my street, a lot of noise, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you for hearing me out, commission, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. Anybody else? Mr. Roundtree, why don't you wait till I close the public hearing, then I'll let you come up and address the comments. Anybody else, members of the public? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Now, Mr. Roundtree, you come up and try to answer the questions.
Chairman Lamb, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree from Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I appreciate your comments. I spoke to Dr. Mueller regarding the concerns over the covenants related to the community. We don't know specifically what those covenants are, I have not read them, however, he's more than willing to abide by those. The property's currently slated, at least the doctor's desire, is to have two separate parcels of land, potentially two homes, but the land should be at least an acre piece, and the quality of home would definitely be at the same level, if not potentially exceeding some of the levels of the homes that are currently in the subdivision in terms of size, you know, maybe similar in character, but that's something we'd have to work through just as far as looking at the Gertners' requirements to make sure we do abide by those. And obviously, through the site plan process, anything related to floodplain, filling the floodplain, altering the grades, it'd have to be addressed during the site plan approval process and the staff comments related to that. So I think we can alleviate the concerns that we'd be threatening anything to do with the floodplain, and we definitely want to respect the Gertners' neighborhood covenants to make sure we're consistent with the neighborhood, and that is basically from Dr. Mueller's thoughts as well. So, with that in mind, thank you.
Mr. Roundtree?
Yes, sir.
How many lots are we talking about?
Right now, we're talking two, or do we know quite yet?
Two or three.
Dr. Mueller.
I think the most that could be there, I think are four or five, if that's the most.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Young, I think I could probably shed some light on that question. Without extending a road any further back, you know, Scottish Drive and Roxburgh Court currently terminate in cul-de-sacs, and, you know, bearing in mind that, and if you look, you could put the computer screen up on the television screen. Here's a, this is in the annexation study, this has the FEMA flood layer overlaid on top of the property. You'll see that the area colored in pink, which comprises about half of the subject property, is in the floodway. That floodway cannot be developed, so that leaves a balance of about three acres that could be developed. Expecting that, Dr. Mueller does not want to extend Roxburgh Court or Scottish Drive any further into the property, he's limited by the amount of road frontage that he has on both of those cul-de-sacs, and he's also limited by the fact that the subject area is extremely encumbered by utility and drain adjustments, and I wish that I had the plat to show to you right now, but there are going to be some challenges with regards to siding homes on this property. So, the development potential for many, many homes is not there. I'd say Dr. Mueller is probably correct that at most you would see four lots created, approximately four lots created on the subject property in its current condition. And with regards to the Scottish Glen covenants, that is not something that, as Chairman Lamb, as you mentioned, that we would be a party to. I think one thing that we would want Dr. Mueller to, you know, before, or that we would want some additional information on would be, those areas are platted as common areas in the Scottish Glen subdivision, however, the property records indicate that Dr. Mueller does currently own those, so I don't know what the status of those two quote-unquote "common areas" is, and what his development rights are for those common areas. So that addresses some of the issues that have been raised.
Any other questions from Mr. Roundtree? Thank you, Clyde.
And that is, that is Dr. Mueller, the applicant.
Yeah, if you, Dr. Mueller, if you want to add something, you're welcome to.
All right, good evening, so I just wanted to answer a couple of those questions. The common area was actually part of the entire 28-acre parcel that we had purchased, and so I think when we platted it, it was, that was part of the city limits, so in order for us to move forward, we had to make a designation, so we're still own the common area, AMB, and have access to joining those to the proposed Rose property. And really, for my reasoning is that right now, from where we live to mow the grass, it takes about four miles for us to go around to get there, and so I feel bad because I don't like to be a bad neighbor, and we haven't been, it's been difficult to keep it really clean and tidy. And so, my, you know, my goal is not to make a huge development, my goal is to separate that and then hopefully have a couple of homes on there, potentially sell the property, so.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate you clarifying that. Any other questions? Now, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion's made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item D, the annexation petition for approximately 17.3 acres located along Manson Pike. Lewis and Elizabeth Jennings are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Property here. The fourth public hearing that we have tonight is for the property colored in orange on the map in front of us, it is an annexation request, and we have a companion zoning request for our next public hearing, but this is, this first public hearing is strictly for the annexation. The property owners, Lewis and Elizabeth Jennings, have petitioned the city to annex this tract, which is a total of 17.9 acres, but you'll notice that the acreage is slightly different in the agenda materials, it's 17.3 acres. That is because, as you can see on the map in front of you, we have, and after discussion with the Planning Commission at our, at our work session meeting a few weeks ago, left out a 10-foot strip in between the rear of the property and the I-24 right-of-way. If we did not do that, it would completely encircle the unincorporated Rutherford County subdivision directly to the east of the subject property where Brookwood Lane and Hallmark Drive is. So, by leaving that 10-foot strip, we do not completely encircle that area, creating an island of county in the city limits, and so that is the reason why we have that 10-foot strip. We have prepared an annexation feasibility study and plan of services for the subject property, which is located on the north side of Manson Pike, and the annexation feasibility study and plan of services indicates that we will be able to provide services to the subject property upon annexation. Sewer is not immediately available to the subject property, it is four parcels away from the subject property. It would be the responsibility of the developer upon development of the property to extend sewer to the subject property for any proposed development. As I mentioned, the 10-foot strip helps not to encircle the 26 parcels that are just to the east of the subject property. With respect to the subject property itself, it is contiguous with the existing city limits on its south side. Manson Pike, the right-of-way, is already in the city limits. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, and the owner has petitioned the city for annexation. The property owners have also requested a zoning request, which we will discuss in the next public hearing. Planning Commission will need to conduct, will need to conduct a public hearing on this annexation request. Staff will be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here representing the applicants on this application as well.
Mr. Roundtree, do you have anything before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this request for the annexation. This is for the annexation only, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hello, my name is Leslie Smith, I live at 3949 Hallmark Drive. I'm the second property in, east of the property that's in discussion now. Part of my concerns about annexation dealt with, would we become an island? That you've answered with the 10-foot strip, and I just wanted to go on record as saying that I would like to see that 10-foot strip maintained, not only during this annexation, but anything that might develop with the MTSU farm property. So, that's really all I have to say.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Anybody else?
Jeff Rainwater, 10:30 breaks the run.
I'm sorry, what's the name, please?
Jeff Rainwater, 10:30 breaks the run, Marjorie. I just want to mention something about, you know, as we, as we develop out of these lands, we're creating kind of a nightmare to a certain degree with these 10-foot sections and these almost lollipop little peninsulas that are actually an island, we're just not calling it an island because we won't leave a little bitty, little strip out, you know, it's kind of like, you know, the state legislature said, you can't encircle it. Plus, it's kind of like me telling my daughter, you can't have candy before dinner, and I turn around, she's got chocolate on her face. Well, she says, it's cake. Well, she violated the spirit of the law, not necessarily the letter of the law. Is that something we should really be doing? You know, let's think about that. You know, legislature pretty much said, no, this is not, we don't want you encircling this, but in essence, for all services like fire, police, all those things, you are encircling it, because they're not going to go drive, you know, drive around through the country, back down to a 10-foot strip to get in there. The people there had to drive back out. I want to just make sure that as we go forward, we, I know we do this all over the city, and we've done it for years, but if you look at the map, it's pretty kind of pathetic, the shape of the city there. Some of that's because the state hasn't let you do round-type stuff, but I kind of think we're violating the spirit of the law there just a little bit. That's basically all about the annexation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rainwater. Anybody else? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. And I agree with you, we spend a lot of time looking at the map, believe me. Any questions for Mr. Roundtree on the annexation request?
Who is, I mean, he asked a question about this 10-foot strip. I guess it's the property owner is responsible for maintaining this strip in question?
Right, Mr. Halliburton, that strip is still, it will not be within the city limits, but it will still be owned by somebody.
Right, okay.
And so it's, it's, it's not in the city limits, but it's not a no man's land.
Right.
And anything that went on with the Stark Farm, the MTSU Farm, as you referred to it, if it affected the connectability to the rest of the unincorporated areas from Brookwood, it would have to be dealt with accordingly.
Continuation.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Chair-
Move for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the final public hearing today is the rezoning of the same property we're talking about. Approximately 17.3 acres located along Manson Pike to be zoned RM16 and GDO1 simultaneous with annexation. Hunter McDowell are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is the same subject property that we just reviewed for annexation. It's colored orange on the map in front of us, located in the north side of Manson Pike, directly to the west of Hallmark Drive and Brookwood Lane, to the south of I-24, and to the east of what is commonly known as the MTSU farm. The subject property directly across the street is zoned RM16, CL, and with the GDO1 overlay district. A little bit further to the west across Manson Pike is zoned RS15, and a little bit further to the, further to the southeast is zoned Commercial Highway with the GDO1 overlay district. The property directly across the street from the subject property that is zoned RM16 and CL is the Smotherman property. We have received a site plan for it on a portion of the, it's halfway on the commercial local property and halfway on the RM16 property for a new daycare center. That daycare center received a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals back in July, and now they are moving forward with plans for that, for that daycare center. Across, across overall creek to the, to the east is the Integra Creek Apartment Complex. And as I mentioned in the previous public hearing, Hallmark Drive and Brookwood Lane are home to an unincorporated, or subdivision in the unincorporated Rutherford County. Directly across I-24, that PRD is the Pearling Brook PRD, which is a zone for condominiums. The bulk of that Pearling Brook property is in Overall Creek and its floodway, so the condominiums are actually a little bit closer to Asbury Lane on the north side of the development, in the plan anyway. Those, those units have not been constructed yet. The subject property has been requested for rezoning to RM16, which is multifamily residential with a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre by right. Additional density can be gained by providing amenities in order to receive density bonuses. Under the RM16 zone, a total of 277 dwelling units could be constructed with the maximum 16 dwelling units per acre. But as I mentioned, additional units could be achieved through density bonuses. The property was originally requested only for the RM16 zoning classification. Staff contacted the applicant, and it was staff's recommendation to the applicant that the zoning also include the GDO1 Gateway Design Overlay District Number One overlay zone to ensure the quality of the development is, is of a high standard. And you'll see the property directly across Manson Pike is in the Gateway Design Overlay District Number One, and the Integra Creek Apartment Complex on the south side of Manson Pike was developed with the, the GDO1 standards as well. The subject property is located within the study area for the general development plan for the Blackman community, and an excerpt of which has been included in the agenda materials. And I will pull that up right now. The community plan recommends this parcel developed as planned mixed-use area centering on technology-based uses, i.e. educational, office, research park, and limited commercial, and anchored by a redeveloped MTSU agricultural campus site. The proposed multifamily use is not consistent with the plan. However, the planning commission may view this use as an appropriate transitional use from the single-family residential, the existing single-family residential development to future potential uses on the MTSU site. With that being said, the planning commission does need to conduct a public hearing tonight on this matter of rezoning to RM16 and GDO1 simultaneous with annexation. Staff will be here, happy to answer any questions. Mr. Roundtree is here representing the developer, and I believe Mr. Hunter is here as well, if you have any questions for him as the actual developer of the multifamily site.
Mr. Roundtree, do you have anything to say?
My name is Charles Haskett with Bonneville Development. We're a development company out of Birmingham, Alabama. We'll be working in conjunction with Mr. Hunter and Mr. McDowell in development of the property. I myself has been in the multifamily development and construction industry for over 10 years, developing communities throughout the southeast. All Class A luxury apartment communities, and we're excited about the opportunity to bring the same type of communities we've been providing in other expanding cities to Murphysboro, and look forward to that opportunity. Well, we're proposing to, to build on the property or a mix of two and possibly, or I'm sorry, three and possibly two-story garden-style apartments with top-of-the-line amenities inside and outside of the community as well. Clubhouse, obviously, a pool, fitness center, and other top-of-the-line amenities that you'll see in some of the communities around Murphysboro, as well as out throughout the southeast. On Monday night, we had a town hall meeting with, with some of our neighbors who are present here, present on here tonight. We look forward to working through the process with them and staff as well. Thank you.
Let me just ask you, what type of rental market are you estimating those to be?
So our target demographic will be wide, and we'll be targeting everyone, basically from young professionals to the millions of retiring baby boomers throughout the community with an average rent of about $1,200 per unit.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the developer or Mr. Roundtree? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Again, thank you. My name is Leslie Smith. I live at 3949 Hallmark Drive in, in Murphysboro, in the Brookwood subdivision. Again, the second house in from the subject property. We met Monday evening at the Blackman Community Center, and that was the first exposure that I had, and if not all of us had, with what the planned development was for this area after it got annexed. What we were shown was a conceptual drawing, which showed nine buildings, a total of 216 properties, three stories high, with garages around the outer, outer loop of the property. It showed a opening, or what I perceived to be an opening, it was kind of hard to tell because they only showed the, the conceptual drawing itself and not how it related to the subject properties around it. And it shows where Hallmark would be, could be extended, I use that term loosely, but with one of their openings or driveways in their development itself. The concerns that, that I have and many of my neighbors have is that we're going from a quiet, large, 26 properties, one-acre-plus properties, well-established neighborhood. I built my home 25-plus years ago, and I'm pretty much one of the new builders in there. So, a lot of them have been in there 30, 35 years, and especially the people that border this, this property. So we're concerned about having this zoning change to an RM16, because it doesn't limit it to the 216 units that, that we were shown, and it was going to be one bedroom, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. Three-bedroom is hardly a retirement community. I mean, it's, it's a family area. Traffic is an issue out there, and, and that density is, is only going to then increase that traffic congestion. It took me literally 10 minutes, 15 minutes to get out of my subdivision at 6 o'clock trying to come here. And there was a discussion about, well, there's a light on Fortress, and there's a light on, you know, up, up the road, but they're not synced, so one goes, the other one goes, so you're constantly caught in that middle of traffic. So our, my concern is the traffic, the drainage, I mean, we're taking a property that's, that was basically farmland and turning it into sidewalk and buildings. There's, there's also Snail Shell Cave back in that area that does create a flooding concern for Murphysboro itself. So I would like to see this, this property developed more along the lines of houses or condominiums as, as opposed to apartments, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Lozano, and I live right there in the entrance to Brookwood Estates, 2102 Brookwood Lane. And as Les said, we, we saw the overlay, and we looked at it Monday. It was very generic, but it was there, and we understood exactly what the, the developers want to do. But I'm going to focus on one, a couple of specific areas on this. And when you look at the overlay on the, on the east side, or if you were looking at the overlay on the right side where you see Hallmark, that whole line, that lineage that connects with the residents, they didn't show any kind of barrier. What you look at is shrubbery and maybe, and I saw the, the carports there is, is what I'm going to call them. But there was no actual barrier to separate that development from the residential part. Our concern is, is that if you just put a fence there, you're going, there's not going to be any privacy for the residents. There's a similar area that I checked out today just to see what it would look like in back of Franklin Road Baptist Church. There is that complex right next door to it, and they have just a fence with a few trees. Trees aren't that big, that large, so they, they just had planted those. But the second and third floor can see over into the Franklin Road Baptist Church area. So I just pictured that probably is what's going to happen when this development happens, that the second, third floor, there will be no privacy at all. It'd just be like, let's just picture a miniature Central Park in New York. That's probably how it's going to be for us there. So that is one main concern, is, is the separation there. The other is Hallmark itself, Hallmark Drive. If you know, in Murphysboro and Nashville, I, I used to drive to Nashville to work, and if I could find a spider trail, I'd find it or look for it. I, I have a gut feeling, and I'm not sure, I'm just, I'm just, it's speculation though, but if that Hallmark is going to be part of the, they call it the emergency route, I, I don't know what that really means. But, but it could also mean that if somebody's looking for a way to get out in that development, they'll find a spider trail, and I hope Hallmark won't be that spider trail to get out and, and then start congesting that small road of Hallmark and Brookwood Lane right now. Believe it or not, we don't have a lot, and we're, what, 25 families there? Sometimes we'll have three or four-car backup, and, and it just takes a while to get out of there. So those are the two concerns I want to address to you, and I'm going to let my other neighbors address the other specifics there. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Hi, to all of you guys. My name is Tammy Harris Clique, and I live at 3957 Hallmark Drive. My husband and my property is adjacent to the property that we're talking about tonight. I would like to mention tonight two areas of great concern to Brookwood Subdivision. These are Cow Crap Cave and Military Cave. I've gathered much of my information from the book Snail Shell Cave, which I did not know existed until yesterday. Some of you may have it, and if you don't, I would highly suggest that any members of the city or county planning boards would get it. It's a great read. You can get it on Amazon, or it's at our local library next door in house. That's where mine's from. It's by Larry Matthews and Bob Bittix. And I talked to Bob Bittix yesterday personally. He was a very nice gentleman. Bob is a member of the Southeastern Cave Conservancy, and this book was published in August of 2012, so it's not that old. The way our city's moving, I guess it is. So these concerns of, of, of me, and I think all of my neighbors, some of which have left because this has been a long meeting tonight. And I would like to say that we did have more people here, for the record. So both of these caves are connected to Snail Shell Cave in Rockvale, as some of you probably know. The connection has been proven by dye testing, and I think that was in the 80s, and I'm sure some of you know that. Okay. Cow Crap Cave, which I think is hilarious, but anyway, if you read the book, it's pretty clear, and I guess it's clear by the name. This is located on the MTSU Farm, which we call the MTSU Farm, on Manson Pike. Mr. Nick Crawford, he's a geologist and a caver. He called this cave the MTSU Carst Window. Cave passages have been mapped, one and a half miles west and one half mile east. Nick, a geologist and a caver, is also a pioneer in the field of dye testing in Tennessee. So pretty incredible. So Cow Crap Cave is on MTSU's property, and Military Spring Cave is on the Jennings property, which we're talking about tonight. My parents live across the street from me, and they're adjacent to this property also. So at the bottom of their property, of course, it hooks up adjacent to the Jennings property. So as a young girl, they've been there since 79, I've known that the cave was there, a lot of water, you know, and so I wanted to do some, some reading about this because I knew that if the proposed site does get accepted, approved...
Ms. Clique, you're going to need to wind it up.
Okay. Needs to be approved. I'll talk faster. There's some things to consider. One of those would be that in this cave, it is roughly five feet in height and 20 feet in width at low flow. Roughly, at high flow, the cave is submerged with roughly 250 million gallons a day, gallons of water a day. Military Spring, which empties into Overall Creek, it does empty into Overall Creek. It goes through the, the culvert underneath the interstate and empties into Overall Creek. I-24 highway planners were not aware of this and had to build a second large culvert under the interstate to handle the flow, and it's a huge culvert. I thought it was a cattle crossing. That's what I've always been told all my life, or since my parents have been there. So this cave system is a microhabitat for a lot of rare endangered species, that's plant and animal, and some include, some of these include the southern cavefish and the highly endangered gray bat. I'd like to close with what they said on page 197, sort of in summary in this book, Snail Shell Cave, by Matthews and Bittix. The Shell, Snail Shell Cave system drains nearly one-fourth of Rutherford County's 624 square miles. Therefore, maintaining this drainage way in good condition is vital to prevent flooding. The research goes on to say the Rutherford County Planning Commission would be wise to protect this valuable way from dumping or other deterioration. Rutherford County was basically agricultural land just 50 years ago, but it is rapidly becoming colored by subdivisions and other developments. This development vastly increases the runoff during major storms events and will further stress the ability of the existing waterways, both surface and subsurface. To handle this increased load, localized flooding is inevitable from... To handle this increased load, localized flooding is inevitable from such rapid development of a major carst area. It is my family's concern, and the families of Brookwood subdivision, directly adjacent to the Jennings property, that the blasting and other construction work that would have to happen in building this proposed complex, three-floor high, three-floor buildings and pools and such, could bring detrimental results, not only to the Jennings property, but to that of the Brookwood subdivision." When talking to Bob yesterday, Bob Bidix that wrote part of this book, helped write this book, what he thought about, I asked him what he thought about the blasting, since he'd been down in the caves and he knew about the caves, and he said this, "I'm not a contractor, builder, nor blaster, but a caver and a caretaker of the Rockville Main Entrance to Snail Shell Cave." That is so hard to say. But he said, "However, it's a very shallow cave in some parts and very deep in others, but very shallow in some parts. Any blasting could plug the cave in one or more areas underground, causing disturbance back up and flooding of the cave's water flow. Above ground," I asked him his opinion of what would happen there, "above ground," he said, gee, he said, "that would be very scary to even think about."
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Chairman, I am a member of the commission. I only have one request. I don't know if you did any geological survey on this land.
Did you state your, I'm sorry, sir, did you state your name?
Edward Watts, 3917 Hallmark Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if you've done any geological survey on this land. If not, I would request that a geological survey be done to see the effects of what the building's going to be, along with the blasting and construction. That's any requests I would have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Jeff Rainwater, 10:30, Breason Run, Murphysboro. I'll tell you a little different discussion than what these neighbors are right next door. I'm not right next door, however, I am just on the other side of the Smotherman property just across the street is where my subdivision is. Right now, right there, we're, I just broke down on a brand-new house. And to kind of weave that into it, to give you an idea of what's going on in that area, a part of town, is speaking of my brand-new house, I have a foundation that's now three weeks old and it's sitting there waiting on framers. Kind of gives you an idea of what's going on in that side of town, and the builders over there, and they can't keep up. And, you know, it's a place where lots are scarce and those type of things. But I want to talk to you a little bit about, you know, right now, you have, you know, this, they want to build an apartment complex here. You go across the street where the rest of the Smotherman property is, and it's zoned for an apartment complex. You go right next door, you got Integra Creek, which is also another large apartment complex that has also recently been approved for an addition to that complex. Adjacent to that, you have Bell Murphysboro, or Aldrich, oh, they just call Bell Murphysboro now, that has 275 units there, another large complex. Less than a mile down the street, you have Cross Creek, which has another 250, 275 apartments in it. Less than a mile down the street from that, you have Building Reserve coming onboard, which is another 180 right now, I think up to 360 before it's over with. Then, within about two miles down the street from that, you have the apartments being built in Kingdom Ridge, which is another 360 that are coming on as they finish those up, about a quarter of the way through done right now, but they're building very fast. Then you go on down to where overall Creek School is, just to the side of the creek from those, and you've approved areas there for another three or four large complexes there, and there's also one or two out on Veterans Parkway. I guess what I'm saying is, when are we going to stop? We're getting to a point now where we're outnumbering the individual houses with apartments, and that's not really the way things should work there. When you look at the Blackman Land Use Study, it actually, you know, had out there that this was, there were certain areas, those four dense, high density, we need some high density out there by all means. Right next to interstate, we have the roads for it. People, I mean, not everybody's going to go buy a house, not everybody can afford a house. There's got to be a definite graduating thing there. I live in Puckett Station. We go all the way from townhouses at $150,000 to $600,000 plus in the houses back in the back. That's great. It's a great community. We love living there. It's really nice. However, we're getting to the point now where we're getting outside of even what that Blackman Land Use Study said. Like this property here, it's not consistent with the Blackman Land Use Study. And one thing that was brought up when I spoke about the Smotherman property was, hey, we did a good job 20 years ago, or whatever it was, because we nailed it for these properties. Well, that was one of the reasons for voting for the apartment on the Smotherman property. However, this one doesn't, so I would like y'all to stay consistent with that and say, well, no to this one because it doesn't meet that, and we've already zoned plenty of apartments for this area. Right now, you know, we have overcrowding issues in the Blackman schools. You have the three schools there. The elementary school, overall creek, took away about some of the overcrowding there. Portables are gone. Most of them are, I think. So I think it's kind of under control, however, it's fastly getting back up to where it was each year, you know, this year was a little more last. The middle school and high school still, you're very crowded, extremely crowded. This one's not zoned for Blackman Elementary anyway because it's on the other side of Manson Pike, however, it is zoned for the middle school and the high school there, which are very, very overcrowded. One thing I want you to take into consideration there is these apartment complexes in the Blackman area don't fall in line with all the stuff you hear from the city a lot of times about the number of children per unit. These are some of the highest per unit, children per unit that you'll find out there. Cross Creek is up to, it's just under .5 per unit as far as children goes, which is extremely high for an apartment complex. So the other thing I want you to think about is, you know, as you heard earlier from the people with the, on the north side of town and everything, you know, inconsistent zonings next to each other and stuff like that, you know, just across the creek into my neighborhood, you're really talking about apartments on one side over there next to each other stacked up, or stacking even more there. On the other side, you've got 50,000 square foot lots, you know, 1.2, 1.3 acres, stuff like that. So I would request that you deny this. We have enough apartments over there. It does not coincide with, or coincide with the Blackman Land Use Study, and I'd appreciate if you could turn this one down. We've got plenty of them out there already. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rainwater. Anybody else?
I live at 3917 Hallmark Drive. I have lived there for 36 years, 36 years. As stated before, most of us are single dwelling homes. Most of us have been there 20 or 30 years. I understand progress comes, and they're talking about the apartments across the road from us. That was a farm. That was one family that owned a lot of land, and they sold it for the apartments. That was not a bunch of little houses on an acre land. That was a big farm, and they sold it all. We are sandwiched in, okay? And I understand progress is progress, but you also have to stop and think. When somebody buys their house and puts an investment in for 36 years, it means something. It means something, and I would ask that you take that into consideration. I've never spoke before publicly like this, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? In case I'll close the public hearing. Questions from members of the planning commission?
Mr. Blomley, you going to discuss the screening?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things that I heard from one of the speakers, one or two of the speakers, was with regards to the building layout and the buffering. There would be a required Type C buffer, which is anytime multifamily development abut single-family residential development, a Type C buffer is required, which is 12 feet in width and consists of evergreen plantings and shrubbery. Once mature, would provide a landscape screen. The applicant can, you know, voluntarily choose to provide additional types of buffering, or when the plan goes to the planning commission for site plan review, the planning commission, under the authority of the zoning ordinance, has the ability anytime there is a different type of land use, a different category of land use, such as abutting single-family, such as multifamily, commercial or industrial, has the ability to additionally buffer, arrange structures, or meet other conditions of approval in order to mitigate any adverse impact that might affect adjacent homes or the areas. So that would mean perhaps a more stringent landscape buffer, fencing, birmingham, things of that nature. Could also mean arranging the structures so that you are sensitive to the adjoining homes such as the homes, such as not having three-story structures directly overlooking the adjacent single-family homes. Another point that I wanted to bring up was the terminus of Hallmark Drive. Currently, it terminates as a stub into the property. It is likely that what we would see happen is we would require some type of proper turnaround, likely in a public right-of-way, so that emergency vehicles and other vehicles would have a proper turnaround at the end of Hallmark Drive. What I might, what's, a situation that's analogous to this is the Richland Falls. Sam remembered it, and I did not. The Richland Falls apartment complex along Dill Lane, you'll recall Atlas Street dead-ended or stubbed right into the subject property without a proper turnaround, proper cul-de-sac. We require that the developer of the Richmond Falls apartment complex construct a cul-de-sac and dedicate that as public right-of-way for a proper turnaround, and I believe there is just an emergency, gated emergency access point off of that cul-de-sac. I would presume that that will be the case in this instance, too. As you know, we do, our emergency service departments do like multiple ways in and out of the development, but sometimes those don't always have to be open to the public. This would, I would say, would likely be an emergency gate accessed by what the fire department calls the Yelp mode, that when the sirens sound, the gate unlocks and opens, and so it's likely that it would not be a full access to the public. However, I say all of this, and we do not have a plan as of yet. I have not seen a plan. We would have to evaluate those issues at the site plan level when we did receive a plan. The other issues that I heard raised were with regards to the Snail Shell Cave and requiring a geological survey, and I think that those issues are probably up, more up Mr. Huddleston's alley. I'm throwing him under the bus again.
I was hoping Mr. Blomley would take that one. Chairman Lamb, the report that Ms. Harris gave was something we are aware of. The properly named Cow Crap Cave is located next door. I knew Military Cave, Military Spring was in the area, but I wasn't completely aware that it was on the end of this property. We're certainly, as a community that has a lot of sinkholes and carst and cave system, we need to be sensitive to those things. A project of this nature would include a geotechnical investigation, would include recommendations by the geotechnical engineer on proper preparation of the site, would include information on blasting, for example, and on the risk of the subsurface damages that were discussed today, blasting possibly causing a failure of the roof of the cave. So that's something I would expect as a normal course of business that the developer would undertake anyway, and we'd certainly be glad to review those with them. Regarding the issues of discharge of stormwater into those systems, we would expect that they'd meet the city and state standard for that. If it is a groundwater injection system, the state additionally has an opinion on that. This is discharging into TDOT right-of-way, so TDOT's going to have an opinion on that. So we're going to have several agencies that will review the stormwater and drainage information on this project. Can't say for sure what we would require on that because we'd need to see their plan relative to how it interacts with the features they've identified. Based on the size of the units, or the number of units they mentioned, I think 216 units, and they were capable, Matthew, of something in the neighborhood of 280 or plus with density bonuses, maybe a part of the site that they're completely okay in staying away from, that they might orient their apartments, their development to stay away from that sensitive area to begin with. And that might be good advice in this situation. I'd be glad to answer any questions on that if you have them.
In agree, Mr. Blomley, I don't see opening the Hallmark Drive up to traffic from the apartment units. I don't see where that would be an option at all. I think the cul-de-sac built onto the apartment side with the crash gate, and just like we did at the other place, so I think that would be more appropriate. What about the east side over there, where would the developer be okay with restricting any more than two-story units to just the west side?
First off, we want to thank the community. They came out and forced at the Blackman Community Center on Monday night, and they were well-spoken, and they gave us a lot of insight. So there's been a lot of movement since we met with them on Monday night as far as how to appease some of their concerns. And one of the things we're probably most excited about, and this is really tertiary, we can't commit to this, but based on initial analysis of grading, we can probably keep the natural buffer that is there totally intact, and it's about as nice a natural buffer as you're going to get. It's 40 to 50 to 60-foot to 70-foot trees, evergreen, densely foliated. You'd have the bushwhack to get through there. We found out that Mrs. Jurnigan, who lives on the property, there's a little bit of a cut right at the end of the road, and that was a simple request of our maintenance guy to go ahead and cut a little dog path so she can walk on the streets, and he went with a bush hog and basically cleared out a whole section. So it almost looks like there's an intentionality connecting those roads together. But the fact of the matter is, is the buffer's intact, and again, based on preliminary analysis for grading, we shouldn't have to threaten that at all. It would be well within everyone's interest to make sure that's strong. As far as by the orientation of those buildings, we've already looked and possibly reoriented the building so that, you know, the three-foot width of the building is not leaking down upon those residents. But if the buffer stays intact, that should be a mute point, although we will try to do our best to make sure the orientation stays as consistent as possible to their concerns. The other part that developers are already willing to do is to go ahead and fence the property along that property line. Outside of ROM's decision about, you know, whether we're going to need that emergency access and making sure there's some way to get through there, and it works in both directions. They can serve their neighborhood, too, if they have to go through the apartments to get in there based on their street front is getting closed. However, we feel like it's a good idea to put a fence, but the issue we have there is we don't want the fence in spite of the buffer, in terms of we don't want to have to kill the buffer in order to put a fence on the property line. We make sense out of that. The current plan has a series of garages that do create a physical barrier between the roadway, the apartment, from the adjacent property, and we thought about maybe we could build a connection between those and actually kind of secure the property line. So that would be the only consideration. We know we don't want to have any migration from the apartments in the neighborhood, but we do want to create a physical separation somehow. And lastly, we spent time after the neighborhood meeting just going through the adjacent community. We went through their neighborhood. It is a very quiet neighborhood. We feel like that can be preserved without any issue with the apartments. But we also noticed that at Integra Creek, there's a lot of globe lights, so there's a lot of light intrusion that goes into their neighborhood, and we're committed to making sure we have some sort of a box-type fixture with directional shields and everything that would protect the integrity of what they have going on there. But again, that buffer, if it stays intact, will handle a lot of that concern as well. So we appreciate their concerns. We feel like we can more than adequately meet their concerns, and we're excited about moving forward with this project.
Okay. Questions from Mr. Roundtree? Doesn't look like they have any questions for you.
Well, I'll just confirm that, like, the geological type stuff is part of what you would do anyway. Is that correct?
It is. It's part of the, and really to Mr. Huddleston's concern, basically the back... It's part of the, and really to Mr. Huddleston's concern, basically the back portion of the lot does drain towards the rear, which is kind of the natural geography of the site. And from a site planning standpoint, we'll feel, we'll be consistent. Everything we've seen so far is all the retention, attention will be towards the rear of the property. And the actual cave is really right on the, we went to try to find it, and we're dressed professionally, or we can get there, dressed in our clothes that we had on today. So it's pretty deep into the woods. There's a pretty substantial amount of existing forest that's back there. So the sinkhole is back in that area, the cave, but we couldn't find access to it from our vantage point today. So it's very much on the rear, but it's also way past what we believe we're constructionally impacting that area.
It's on the interstate side, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Roundtree, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of this commission?
Bob, before we vote, I know Mr. Rainwater looked at me about three or four times every time he'd say the Smotherman property, so I want to, I just, I want to make sure that there's no confusion that I'm no way related or involved with that property, so. And I will be voting.
You didn't make a lot of money out of it, mostly.
I haven't yet. I'm hoping there's inheritance somewhere. I don't know about it.
I'll make the comment, I think if we do approve this, and it sounds like the developer and Mr. Roundtree are willing to work with the neighbors, but I think as a planning commission, we've got, we've got a little work to do with respect to the site plan, and I think we owe it to the neighbors that we look at that site plan and try to address the issues that they brought up and have as little impact as possible on the adjacent property as part of that site plan approval. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming today and participating in the process. It will, once again, like I said at the other public hearing, this will also go before the City Council as well for another public hearing. Okay, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Move on to staff reports and other business. One item under that, Mr. Whitaker, discussion of the comprehensive plan, Chapter Four, land use and presentation from representatives of KKC. You've got three minutes.
As promised earlier, we do have a brief presentation from KKC regarding our comprehensive plan. At this time, we'll turn it over to...
Thanks. It may take me just a moment to pull up this presentation.
I've heard that just about.
Yeah, actually.
Just in.
Lived here all my life, never heard that.
The fire must have pitched trash and machine.
Good job.
That's the best.
The language is exactly right, very precise, very sympathetic.
Thank you.
Mr. Huddleston, thank you for the presentation.
What I'm trying to do is, after any other comment.
And I appreciate y'all's moment of silence with me.
I think he deserves at least to be able to talk.
We're having a few technical difficulties, I do believe.
You want to give us another date on the sign ordinance?
It will be, do you want one? We can talk signs if you'd like me to.
Mr. Huddleston said he's leaving if we start talking signs.
Doug, go fix that.
Yeah.
Can you email it to us?
Here we go. We got it.
Thank you for, once again, hearing a brief presentation on where we are with respect to Chapter Four, our land use and character chapter. Again, because this will be the second time for most of you, I'll keep this very brief. Commissioner Smotherman, I'd be happy to meet with you maybe tomorrow if you'd like just to go over things in greater detail. Just to begin with, as I'd mentioned previously, the last time we were in town, we met with members, departmental heads, to discuss basically where we can anticipate growth over the next 20 years' time. And as a result of that meeting, we all gathered around a table and started, again, mapping out areas that were probably prone to subsequent development based on the provision of municipal infrastructure, the potential willingness of landowners to sell property, et cetera. And we developed what we have on the screen, which is a growth sequencing program that maps out, again, available lands for development in five-year increments. This has now become the basis for our future land use map, which is one of the key components of the land use plan, planning element. This is a shot of our draft future land use map. This is a first iteration. It's going to go through several iterations in the weeks and months to come, I'm sure, as we get additional community input and input from your commission as well as the City Council. Just to remind you, based on our demographic projections from the first chapter, planning context, we are looking at not only the lands within the city limits, but also the land within the urban growth boundary. So our projections are basically looking like around 2035, which is the planning horizon, we'll be looking at approximately 362,000 people living within the urban growth boundary and city limits. That's an additional, a little over 160,000 persons. And our first take or first cut on our, of our, excuse me, future land use map is basically accommodating a little over 120,000 persons. So there is a delta of 40,000 persons that we're going to need to try to accommodate either through increased densities, or maybe this represents a build-out limit that we try to adhere to. But at the same time, I'd just provide the caveat that this is, these are demographic projections. There are any number of regional and national trends that might impact these projections. So, but it's something that we can work toward. But that leaves a remaining area of land of about 35,000 acres minus the needed Murfreesboro City Schools and Rutherford County School District schools, which will take up a little bit more than 1,100 acres, plus the needed parks and recreational facilities, spatial requirements, which is almost 1,000 acres. We're still looking at almost 33,000 acres. The way we've approached the development of this future land use map is based on community character, which if you look at the various anatomical elements of community character or your built environment, if you will, it's essentially composed of buildings, so much impervious cover, like hardscape, streets, sidewalks, as well as green space. Well, if you think about community character as being something that extends over a continuum from rural to urban, these percentages will, of course, vary based on where you are in that kind of continuum. The importance about looking at things from a character-based perspective is that it tells you more about the, or, let me back up, excuse me. The importance of looking at character is because you can have a land use in various settings. One might be, as per this slide, a restaurant in a very auto-centric setting versus a restaurant that might be in your downtown area, and the character is completely different. One's very walkable versus one's very auto-centric. But over the whole continuum, we can map out different aspects of rural, suburban, and urban character, and each one will have its own degree of open space, hardscape, building mass, et cetera. As I had mentioned, as some of you may be familiar with, the SMART code that was developed by Andres Duany and Elizabeth Plater Ziberk, they have, they call it transect-based planning, which is somewhat of an oversimplification of the idea that we're pushing, but nonetheless, it makes sense, although cities are rarely developed in this kind of gradation of density. Now, just to back up very quickly, one thing that we have looked at is how we can shrink down the number of zoning districts within your zoning map and zoning ordinance, of which currently there are about 31 zoning districts and six overlay districts, 16 of which will accommodate residential development. If we look at one area in particular, this is up in northeastern Murfreesboro, if you will, a large residential area primarily zoned RS-15, RS-12, and then there are varying densities of multifamily apartment complexes to the south, as well as zero lot line and duplex developments to the east. But if we look at this area a little bit more closely and look at the character of the area therein, we might find some discrepancies when it comes to densities as well as the character similarities between zoning districts, more so than in the various, the same zoning districts. For example, if you look at these two parcels here, one's in the RS-15 zoning district and the other is in the RS-12 zoning district, they're virtually identical with respect to not only building mass, but also the size of the parcel itself. So if you were driving down the street, if you were driving down Alexander Boulevard or Bradbury Drive, you'd be pretty hard-pressed to understand any kind of difference or be able to discern any kind of tangible, visible difference or spatial difference between an RS-12 and an RS-15 district. So character-wise, they're, again, they're virtually the same. However, if you look at that RS-15 area to your left and then compare it to the RS-15 area to the right, the character is distinctly different, and we would suggest that to make them more similar, you'd have to tear out a large portion of the houses, you'd probably have to bump up the buffer space between the RS-12 and the RS-15. But what this illustrates, and there are examples of this, and as I'd mentioned previously, there are any number of reasons why this has occurred. The date of the development, or the period of development for the RS-15 areas to the right versus the RS-15 and RS-12 areas to the left, and several other issues that I'm not aware of. But what we're trying to illustrate here, and there are, again, several examples throughout your community, is that sometimes the character might be the same between two areas, but the zoning districts might be distinctly different. Whereas on the other side, on the other hand, the character is totally different, yet the zoning is the same. So there's some significant disparities, but it shows the importance of looking at land, land use from a character perspective. Just looking at one more time, here is a lot in that RS-15 area that's 2.14 acres, and then another lot in the same zoning district that's 0.35 acres. So again, that has a role and an impact on community character. So one of the things we're proposing is that we lump a number of your zoning districts together that have similar characteristics and just make one zoning district with a series of permitted by right development options. So a developer could come in and develop, whether he wanted to develop or she, an RS-15 parcel, RS-12, or an RS-10 parcel, because again, the, it's the lot widths that make the most impact on visual character, not the lot depths. And so we're, we would make similar suggestions for, for example, what we're calling an auto-urban general residential, single-family district, which would have certain development options like the RS-8, RS-4, RD, and RZ. And this is the slide that I was unable to show you earlier, but this is a good example of the importance of having these by right development options. So this is basically the same tract of land, for example, that's being subdivided. However, there are three development options. On the left, you have, or let me just characterize the development. So you have a wooded area, and there's a road running through it with a number of dwellings, and then it's, on the south side, there's a river, and there's a wooded area. So on the left side, you have a standard kind of subdivision that would consist of 15 units at two acres in parcel size each. At this point, your open space ratio is 0 percent. However, the developer could go in and develop a cluster development option where you'd have, again, 15 units, but the size of the parcel would be 1.5 acres, but then you're starting to leave open space for community recreational trails, for the preservation of sensitive environmental areas, that kind of thing. A third development option, the developer could come in and build 24 units where the each unit or each lot was 10,000 square feet, but he'd be required to provide a 65 percent OSR, or open space, ratio. So again, what's important here is not necessarily the density, because the density is neutral in all three of these alternatives. What's important is that you're preserving much-needed open space that can be for the enjoyment and benefit of the entire community and for the future, whatever you want to do within the future. So that's an important thing. And so one last diagram that, when we're developing these districts, we ought to be rewarding developers for doing good, responsible development. So the variables that we have to play with, on the one hand, is lot size, and then on the other hand, is density. Well, as we understand, if we start to decrease the lot size, we are potentially increasing the density. But on the one hand, you could have a subdivision of 16 parcels, but if you increase the density, you could potentially develop 21 parcels of a smaller parcel size, of course. Most cases, this would require some kind of zoning change, except for if you... we had these development options, it's just showing also that not only is the developer able to build additional parcels, or develop additional parcels, but he's able to preserve that much more open space. So in this case, not only is he developing 21 parcels, but he's preserving, in this case, four units of open space. So what we're proposing, as far as our future land use map, is to adopt or embrace a character-based kind of perspective, where we have kind of boiled all of your zoning districts down. And one of the key policies here is that we're basically using a one-to-one kind of relationship of land use classification to zoning district, on a, I'm sorry, a parcel-by-parcel basis. But so the, instead of using 31 different districts for land use classifications, we've boiled it down to about 10, two of which neighborhood conservation and neighborhood restoration have to do with preserving the existing neighborhoods, but using those as the basis for any kind of infill development or redevelopment that would occur within those neighborhoods. Secondly, we're proposing two different types of rural land use classification. This has basically been used for those lands that are outside of our growth sequencing program. And then third, as far as, from a suburban perspective, where we have three different character classifications for suburban development based on the parcel size, and then four different types for our urban, ranging from our general residential character to a multifamily residential character, and then two different types of urban character. And then subsequently, business park, industrial, public institutional, special use areas like that might consist of land uses like your jail, or waste treatment plant, or more infrastructural land uses and orientation, then finally, park and open spaces. And I'll just summarize this quickly in closing, but as far as neighborhood conservation is concerned, what we would be doing is applying this to established neighborhoods that are largely built out and stable, and where no significant change in development type or pattern is expected. And what the whole design, or what the intention is here, is to preserve the existing housing stock and avoid excessive nonconformities and variance requests. Because essentially, what we would be doing is locking in the standards for each neighborhood area based on the existing built environment, the existing fabric, the setbacks of the buildings, the intensity of development as well. The NC district designation can be divided into further sub-districts, and we have done that. And this is basically for when, when you all decide to develop a unified development code, this will be very important, that you break these neighborhood conservation areas into sub-districts. But this just shows very quickly, the future land use legend on your left-hand side, and then the various NC neighborhood conservation districts on your right side. But in the legend, you can see that there's a direct relationship whereby NC-1 refers to a suburban estate residential district that would be 1 to 3 acres in area, and then the NC-2 would be the suburban residential, which would incorporate densities similar to RS-15, 12, and 10, and so forth. But you can see in the legend, the direct relationship from the existing neighborhood conservation areas to the proposed development, or land use classifications, excuse me. So I would invite you, over the next several days, we have a very preliminary draft of the future land use map on the wall. We're going to be back in probably sometime around mid-October to take this to the next level with respect to having community workshops and that kind of thing, really to just gauge people's interest and input, or enable their input into this future land use planning program. So with that, I'll stop there, but I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
After reviewing our public hearings earlier today, do you have any advice for us?
Well, I thought it was very interesting in that it seemed to me that not all of the information was readily available as far as the true density of, for example, an RS-12 zoning district versus what was being proposed. It seemed to me very clear that it would be a higher density potentially if you developed that, that area, that subdivision using an RS-12 or an RS-15, just based on the number of people per household. I might be wrong in that, but...
No, you're exactly right, but...
And all the additional trips that would ensue, you know, carting kids around to school and the public of, you know, whatever, those kind of events, so...
Thank you.
So, but thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. We're looking, we are looking forward to this, your work as it proceeds and for the next, how much longer do you think you're going to be on that?
I'm, I think that we, we still have the economic development chapter that we're working on, this future, the Chapter Four, the land use and character. Then we have the whole mobility chapter to do, and then the implementation chapter. So we have probably another six months or so, but we don't want to rush it.
Sure.
Not to mention the major transportation plan.
Well, I'm excited about it. I'm, I'll be glad to see the finished product. It'll be something really good.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, do you have anything else?
No, Chairman, I do not.
Mr. Ives, Mr. Flauben.
Yeah, real briefly. I sent everybody, I think, an email today about a land use seminar coming up in October that's sponsored by Metro Law Department, along with the county attorneys and municipal attorney association. Mr. Smotherman, I, as I said, went last year. I think he wants to go again this year. I'm planning to go. It's more legal than many other things, but the discussion and the information that came out of it was excellent, and all about zoning and land use. If, I haven't asked Gary if he's got any money to send anybody yet, but...
I was, I was interested until I saw where it said it would be of particular interest to city and county attorneys. So, I'm out.
But it's, it would be, it would be good valuable information. I think you'd enjoy it. If you're available and interested, let us know. We'll see if we can scrape up a dollar or two someplace.
Yeah, bring up money before I knew.
That's right.
It's all about the money.
Mr. Flauben, Mr. Huddleston, anything else? Thank you. Now we stand adjourned.